Good evening, everybody. Whoops. Good evening, everybody. For those who may be new to attending our City Council meetings, I'll just go over a few items, housekeeping items. First of all, if you have not already picked up an agenda, they're available on the table at the rear of the room. If you wish to speak on one of the items that is on the agenda this evening, we ask that you please complete a gold-colored public hearing speaker's card. Make sure that you note the number of the item or the items on which you wish to speak. If you're here to bring business to the City Council, which is not on our agenda and on which we cannot take action, please complete a blue citizen comments cards. All the cards should be given to our city clerk, Ms. Hannah, who sits off to my left, and the cards will be passed up here to the dais, and I'll call your names from these cards in the order in which they've been received. I'd like to also draw your attention to the larger cards, the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven cards. These contain the guidelines for you to follow in presenting your comments to the City Council, whether they're on an item that is on our agenda or an item that is not on our agenda. These are the guidelines that the council has adopted by resolution. These are the guidelines that you agree to when you sign your speaker's card and that I will follow in receiving your comments. The meeting is called to order. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag in a Moment of Silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is consideration of the minutes of our meeting of November 13th, 2012. Council members, do you have corrections or additions to those meetings to offer?
Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez.
Move to approve of the minutes of November 13th, 2012.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the minutes of the meeting. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. We move now to bids and contracts. Mr. Skeet, would you introduce item number one, please?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Now, before I move into the first item on the agenda, I didn't hear you mention that Councilmember Alvarez may be joining us by phone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Councilmember Alvarez, are you there? Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes, I am, ma'am.
Okay, she is attending the meeting telephonically. Thank you for reminding me.
Mayor, the first item on the agenda is an agreement with Empire Southwest LLC for certified power train rebuild for the landfill scraper. Mr. Strohken, Executive Director of Public Works, will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is a request for City Council to award an invitation for bid number 1314 and authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement for a certified rebuild of the landfill auger scraper with Empire Southwest in an amount not to exceed $373,966.30. This piece of equipment, which is nine years old, is used to excavate, transport soil to the working face each day so that garbage can be buried at the landfill. The rebuild of the power train, which consists of rebuilding both engines and transmissions on this piece of equipment, is far less expensive option than purchasing a new auger scraper, which would cost an estimated $1.3 million. One bid was received to complete this work from Empire Southwest, and staff has reviewed the bid and deemed it to be responsive and appropriate. The cost includes a 36-month warranty or 5,000 hours, whichever comes first, and funds are budgeted in the Landfill Enterprise Fund to pay for the work. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have questions regarding this item?
No.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor, Frey.
Mayor, I move that the City Council move to award invitation, bid 13-14, not to exceed the amount of $373,966.30.
Second. Motion, a second, to approve the recommended actions. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Skeet, would you introduce item two, please?
Item number two is the order for maintenance contract with Cisco Smart Net Maintenance. Mr. Chuck Murphy, Executive Director of Technology and Information, will present the item.
Thank you, Mr. Skeet. Good evening, Mayor and council. This is a request for council to approve an expenditure of funds for the renewal of Cisco Smart Net Maintenance and Support. The purchase is based on state contract pricing from Insight Public Sector, Inc., in the amount of $59,957.93. Cisco Smart Net Maintenance provides hardware repair, software patches, upgrade rights, and technical support for covered products, which are critical to the city's network infrastructure. Funding for this purchase is budgeted and available in the Technology Replacement Fund. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have questions for Mr. Murphy? Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez.
Mayor, move to approve Cisco Smart Net Maintenance and Support renewal from the state of Arizona contract with Insight Public Sector, Inc., in the amount of $59,957.93.
Second.
It's a motion, a second, to approve the recommended actions. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, please, Mr. Skeet.
Item number three is the authorization of the purchase of Oracle Database license. Interim Chief Black will present this item.
Good evening. This is a request for City Council to approve the purchase from Mythix, Inc., for Oracle Database licenses in the amount not to exceed $84,546. The six Oracle Database licenses we are requesting to purchase are a required component of the new computer-aided dispatch and records management system, also known as the CAD-RMS, which was approved by council in October of 2011. The new system will improve the ability to respond to and analyze crimes for commonalities, more accurately deploy resources, and improve access to critical information for officers responding to calls for service. It is staff's recommendation for council to approve the purchase from Mythix, Inc., for Oracle Database licenses in the amount not to exceed $84,546. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have questions for Chief Black? Thank you, Chief.
Mayor.
Councilmember Clark.
I move we approve a contract with Mythix, Inc., Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $84,546.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the recommended action. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We move now to ordinances, and, Mr. Skeet, would you introduce item four, please?
Mayor, members of the council, item four is a request for the City Council to adopt an ordinance establishing an ad hoc committee, an ad hoc city manager's recruitment committee. The purpose of this committee is to begin to outline the process for the City Council to select a new city manager. At a workshop on November 20, council-directed staff to bring this ordinance forward for consideration. It was suggested that this committee be comprised of the City Council members, the mayor-elect, and the councilmember-elect to begin this process of identifying how the city manager would be appointed in the future. Staff recommendation is to read and be on the title and adopt an ordinance establishing the ad hoc city manager's recruitment committee.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions or comments? We have residents who have asked to speak on this item, and so I'll call first Mr. Ken Jones.
You're really moving fast. I wasn't quite ready. Ken Jones, 6130 West Clermont, Glendale, Arizona, Ocatilla District. There are several things that should be required of our next city manager. You were hired to serve our citizens. Any manager that you hire should do that, too. He should do a really good job of it. I should recognize all of our out-of-town visitors, the fans that are here tonight and help fill up our building, bring the cameras out. But a good city manager and council could change our reputation. Just look around. We are known as the easiest place in the world to fleece. We are known to be easy to con. So instead of these people going to their own city council and asking them to help with millions of dollars, they come here where it's easy. They want you guys cough up 300 million we don't have. A good city manager can change all of this, and I hope you spend some time, get a good businessman, and someone who will do his job, not somebody else who's from Chicago or California or Phoenix or Cave Creek. Not their job. Do our city's job. Thank you.
Arthur Thurston.
Mayor Scruggs, council. My name is Arthur Leroy Thurston. I reside and live at 7608 North 46th Drive, Glendale, Arizona 85301. My phone number is 623-435-2800. I've been here nearly every meeting for the past year, and I think you, the council members, at least know my position on nearly everything that we've talked about in the past and currently have not really changed much in that direction. And I know that we need to go out and we need to look for new people, new blood, invigoration of the dreams and wishes that you've developed over five, 10, 15, and 20 years. And I presume that this, because of my lack of knowledge, but I'm presuming that this is kind of the first part of the action for going forward in this basis. The one thing that I would like to say about the position of City Council, and this is directly to you people as well as to our current city manager and our past city manager, is I would like to take into consideration that we're hiring a city manager or looking for a city manager, and hopefully we'll find a good and professional person here, there, or on the other side of the world. Or even if we decide there's no law that says we can't keep the people that we have, work with them, and promote them, and up them into our system, that we hope our whole city is going to go forward and upward and bigger and better in the future. But I would like to ask a favor of you people, is I would like to ask specifically that if you appoint a city manager, please advise him that that does not automatically make him a professional negotiator. Beasley took on that position, and I was not happy with the negotiations that he worked on in many cases. Mr. Skeet promoted himself to an acting city manager, someone else did, and I'm not happy, the fact that he became a negotiator. I would like to have a city manager become a city manager and stay a city manager, and hire, if you need, negotiators and other professional people to work underneath them. And the negotiation aspect, as I think, is a critical and key element. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Hannah, would you please read the ordinance by number and title?
Ordinance number 2825, New Series, An Ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, Establishing an Ad Hoc City Manager Recruitment Committee, Appointing Members There To, and Setting For Its Charge.
Mayor. Councilmember Knack.
I move that we pass and adopt ordinance number 2825, New Series.
Second. Motion, a second, to approve recommended actions. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilmember Alvarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, Frey?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Knack?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move now to item number five. Mr. Skeet, please.
Mayor, members of the council, item number five is an arena management agreement with Arizona Hockey Arena Partners LLC and Arizona Hockey Partners LLC. Before I introduce the item and complete a review of the changes between the agreement that was passed in June and the agreement before you tonight, I would like to acknowledge that Mr. Jamison and his team is in the audience and I'm sure would be available to speak if need be to answer any questions as we go through this process. The slides that I'm about to run through now with you tonight is going to compare the original agreement approved in June of earlier this year to the one before you tonight. Both agreements, as you can see, were 20-year agreements. However, this agreement before you tonight includes another option for a five-year extension at the end of that 20 years. The agreement before you tonight also includes minimum performance standards. The original agreement approved in June did not include that. The minimum performance standards is for at least 40 hockey nights per year and 30 additional non-hockey events during the course of the year. Along with that performance standards, there is a fee, a penalty, if, should those minimum standards not be met. For the non-hockey events, there's a 25, there's a, first of all, there's a 30 nights per year minimum expectation, and there's a $25,000 per event should the arena management fail to meet that standard. I would also want to point out the change from last week's workshop presentation, based on some other changes that I was able to negotiate with Mr. Jamison over the last week. Added to this agreement tonight as compared to what we discussed last Tuesday at workshop, this provision, however, does not apply to this fiscal year. On the next slide, I will point out the rationale and the reasoning for removing this penalty provision from this fiscal year. As you may recall, the agreement that was presented last week in draft form reflected an $11 million management fee that was associated with the fourth year of this agreement. There were some concerns raised by members of the City Council that we are five months into the fiscal year and potentially at least six months into the fiscal year before we could completely execute this agreement. And there was concern that the agreement, as it was written, did not reflect the fact that the management fee for the fourth fiscal year was prorated for the actual amount of time that Mr. Jamison and his team was going to be managing the arena. Following some conversations over the last week with Mr. Jamison, he has agreed to accept a proration allocation of the fourth fiscal year's management fee. With that consideration, we also discussed the fact that the penalty is associated with the performance, with the performance standards and the expectations associated with the performance standards. As time goes on, will become more difficult for any of those performance standards to be achieved. After some consideration of that argument and that particular point, I agree that it was potentially unrealistic for us to truly expect if the management of the arena was handed over to Mr. Jamison sometime in the next two to three months. Given the transition that would need to happen from the current management that is handled by the NHL to his management team, it would be difficult and probably unattainable to expect that he would be able to deliver on any significant performance of those non-hockey events during the limited time that he has available in the remainder of this fiscal year. Hence the reason why the performance standards for the fourth fiscal year was removed from The original management agreement called for a $24 million capital improvement expenditure replacement fund. The current agreement calls for $12 million to be dedicated towards that process. The total payment over the life of the agreement that was approved in June was $324 million. And the payments before, the total payments before you in this agreement is going to be, with the decision to prorate the fourth year, is going to be less than the $320 million shown here. The $320 million is for the 20 complete fiscal years. If one were to assume 50% of this fiscal year will be over, then that reduction in the payments would be $5.5 million for a payment of about $314.5 million or $315 million as a potential maximum payment. Using a 6.5% discount rate, the net present value of the original agreement was $203.7 million. Using the same discount rate, the net present value of $320 million is the 188.7 on the screen. However, assuming that 50% of this fiscal year will be gone by the time this agreement is fully executed, one can expect the net present value to be about $182.9 million for a difference, a savings to the city of $20.8 million. The arena management agreement also calls and provides for some, this new arena management agreement, I should say, calls and provides for some incentive to the Arizona Hockey Group should they provide an additional 20 events over the minimum 30 required in the performance standards. With an average attendance of 7,000 attendees, this agreement allows for and calls for an incentive payment of $500,000 for every 20 events achieved over the minimum standard And finally, the agreement, the original agreement did not address the fact that the city would be losing revenues if there was a lockout or strike by the NHL and/or the players. The agreement discussed and presented to you last week called for a $60,000 per game penalty for this fiscal year, for the games not currently being played and those that will not be played. Again, with the modifications in the management fee for the fourth fiscal year to basically just the portion of the fiscal year that the Arizona Hockey Group manages the arena, I thought it was not unreasonable to waive the penalties for this fiscal year, but keep the concept of a penalty for the remaining nine fiscal years, 19 fiscal years of this agreement, at the $60,000. I'd like to now turn the presentation over to Ms. Sherri Shohammer, the Executive Director of Financial Services, to show a side-by-side analysis of the two options before you tonight. The analysis includes, the analysis that Ms. Shohammer will present to you tonight includes the following assumptions. A constant to the revenue base of the city over the next 20 years of 3.5%. An inflationary factor of 3% is also included in the numbers and presentation that Ms. Shohammer will present to you. One of the options before you tonight is, should you choose not to accept this agreement, that the team may move from the arena. With that, we also factored in a $2.5 million loss in base revenues to the city's coffers should that decision be the one made tonight. Again, I want to restate that this is an analysis and not a budget forecast or projection. It is simply a side-by-side comparisons of the two options with the above assumptions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Shohammer for a presentation of that analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Skeet. This next slide shows the FY 13 through FY 17 five-year comparison of the two options that Mr. Skeet had mentioned. We're bringing back to you the financial analysis of the two options that we showed you last week at workshops related to the Coyotes. One option assumes the team continues to play at the Glendale Arena, and the other assumes the team no longer plays there. This slide and the next two slides will take you through a 20-year analysis. This way, you can see the analysis of the two options over the short, mid, and long term by looking at the five, 10, 15, and 20-year increments. With these snapshots, you can see the estimated short and long-term impacts of both options. Now, before summarizing the two options, I want to point out the main assumptions you will find in both that are in addition to what Mr. Skeet had mentioned. Do you? Excuse me. The temporary sales tax rate increase remains in effect until its sunset date of August 2017, which is really fiscal year 18. Debt is restructured based on the information that was recently presented to you about the Municipal Property Corporation and Public Facilities Corporation refinancing. That was at a workshop at the end of October and an evening meeting in mid-November. The expected debt service payment schedule, net of the expected savings from the refinancing, is incorporated into both scenarios. Adjustments for the funding of the Risk Workers Comp and Employee Benefit Trust Funds are included in both scenarios. The expected AZSTA contribution for baseball is incorporated beginning in fiscal year 18 and beyond. It's at a conservative $700,000 per fiscal year. That contribution essentially is a revenue offset to a portion of the baseball debt service for those fiscal years. And we removed any inflationary adjustments in the fiscal years where we show reductions since they essentially offset each other. Now, the option that you see on top, where the team remains in place, it shows a revised arena management fee based on the information that Mr. Skeet just presented to you. So, for example, the arena management fee for FY 13 is now $6 million instead of the $11.5, which is what you saw last week. And it's just for that one change in fiscal year 13. It is a one-time adjustment, not an ongoing adjustment. So this means it does not have a cumulative impact. So this means it does not have a cumulative impact as an ongoing adjustment would have. As a result, you do not see any adjustment of the $20 million of ongoing reductions that must be made over five years with this option. Finally, for the option without the team, which is this, the section on the bottom half of the slide, the arena management fee has been adjusted by the same inflationary amount used for the city's operating expenditures. For the slide currently on the screen, which shows the first five years of the 20-year analysis, you will see the following is the main difference between the two scenarios. The option with the team shows operating budget reductions totaling $20 million and the option without the team shows operating budget reductions totaling $12 million. However, under both options, the ending fund balance is expected to grow to approximately $60 million. Now, if we flip to the next slide, we'll see the next five-year increment FY '18 through FY '22, so years six through 10. In both cases, you will see the sales tax increase will go away in FY '18. So you'll notice a big drop in the revenue number from FY '17. You will also see that the estimated ending fund balance is expected to decline over the five-year period, assuming there is no change in the operating budget or the operating revenues other than the minor changes that Mr. Skeet had mentioned related to growth and inflation. For the sake of showing the mid- and long-term impact of the two options with and without the team, we're assuming no other changes to the operating budget. Now, if we go to the next slide, which shows the 20-year analysis in five-year increments, the message here is twofold. By 2022, there's a negative fund balance in both options. So what does that mean? That means that something would have to be done to the expenditure side of the equation, the revenue side, or a mix of the two to address the negative fund balance. In the long run, based on the assumptions in this analysis of the two options, the city is in a relatively better financial position with the team than without the team. That's over the long run. What you don't see reflected here is the cumulative operating budget reductions that must be done between FY '13 and FY '16 during the first four years under both options. It's $12 million if the team isn't here and it's $20 million if the team stays. Now, if we go to the next two slides, summarize the reductions that we had discussed with you briefly last week and had presented to you in late September. So for the first round of budget cuts, which would be in FY '13 and '14 under both options, the services that would not be affected just in this first round would be, police and fire would be left untouched in this first round. Rose Lane Pool would remain open in this first round of cuts. All libraries would remain open, but the operations would be restructured based on the three options that were discussed with you in a workshop, and those options are still under evaluation. And special events would continue with the exception of the Jazz Festival in the spring. Now, if we go to the next slide, this summarizes the range of reductions that would have to be done in the first round, which would be this fiscal year and next fiscal year. It would be spread out. It ranges between $4 and $6 million. What it shows here is that approximately $3.7 million of the $6 million would come from the salary and the benefit side, which of course makes sense because the majority of our operating expenses are on the salary and the benefit side. Currently, we have about 30 vacancies today in the general fund, and that's excluding those in public safety. And then all other operating expenses would account for about $2.3 million. Now, we don't have the exact mix of the reductions yet because we're still working on evaluating those that were developed back in September. So what could we do now and what could be phased in later? But in any case, this shows you the range. And the $4 million in cuts just equates to 66% of the $6 million in cuts. And with that, we bring to a close this presentation.
Councilmember's questions for Ms. Shohammer?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Alvarez.
On the services not affected, it says Rose Lane Pool open. And what would be the fee for a child to go into the pool once you, for this coming year?
Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, the assumption is there would be no change in fees from what they were this past summer. So there would be no change. I don't know what the fees are off the top of my head, but it would be the same as last summer.
Okay. So, because at one time you mentioned $5 and I think 60 cents. So that's changed. But you don't have an idea of what the fee would be?
Mayor and Councilmember Alvarez, we could have Mr. Strunk provide that for you by email, but what the exact fee was last summer and what it will continue to be next summer.
Okay. Well, I really wanted to know now because that makes a lot of difference. You know, Rose Lane Pool is the only pool south of northern, and it's in an area of poverty. So, you know, if you're going to leave the pool open, but you're going to charge close to $6, then it doesn't matter if you open it. I don't think anybody can afford that.
Mayor and Councilmember Alvarez, Mr. Strunk is going to get the information and provide it when he has it.
Okay. All right. And can you tell me all this, all libraries open, but operations restructured? Are you talking about the libraries going into Maricopa County, being administered by them?
Mayor and Councilmember Alvarez, if I may, the three options that have been considered and the one option that is probably the most favorable at this point in the evaluation is that there will simply be a restructuring of the current employee staffing structure at the libraries. That would probably be the most economical way for us to continue to provide the services. As I've said to you, we are looking at and continuing to receive fine-tuned numbers from the other two options, the privatization and the Maricopa County library system. However, the library staff, the chief head librarian and her staff has gotten together and provided us with a very interesting restructuring of the staffing structure and models that they're currently providing that I think would be the model that we would accept as the alternative model at this point. It would require a complete restructuring of the staffing structure and the way they do business. However, the tentative model that was presented continues to reassure that the current 111 hours of open service to the public will remain, and there would be some significant savings with that restructuring that we are considering.
And how many employees do we have at the library, you know, up to now? There's not going to be any more, any layoffs, but how many is it affecting? How many are employed at this time?
Councilmember Alvarez, the current proposal that has been considered, we currently have 57 employees in the library system. The current proposal that is being considered would reduce the number of employees and restructure the management and the hierarchy in the system and potentially lose, we would potentially have to lose either through attritions or layoffs about 10 employees to make the savings that is projected by the head librarian today.
Okay. So then it's going to affect 47. Okay. With the libraries and going into the different options, are the libraries going to be rented out to, the libraries would stay, the services would stay at the same place, right?
That's correct.
Like Brown and Velma Teague and so forth?
That's, Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, that's correct. All three libraries would remain open at the current open and operation schedules.
Okay. All right. On the, on the 30 vacancies that you have right now, they, the, what is it, part-time employees are not included in this 30 vacancies, right?
Mayor and Councilmember Alvarez, that's correct. The part-time employees are not included.
Okay. And how many part-time or contract employees do we have now?
You asked us that question last week, and we have been gathering the information. We're just trying to confirm a final piece of information that we can provide it to you. I just, I don't have it with me.
Well, you know, that's kind of important to me, and that's why I asked you last week, and I thought you would have it this week. Because there's only like nine people that receive benefits with being a contract employee. And if you're going to have these vacancies, then turn them into contract makes a lot of difference on the money that we're spending. So as soon as you get that, I really want to know how many more, or how many contract employees we have and what is the total amount that we're spending. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, I think, I see Mr. Strunk coming back to the room. So I think he has the numbers with regards to the fees for the Rose Lane Pool operations.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, the answer to the question, if I understand it correctly, currently, the resident rates for Rose Lane Pool, ages two and under are free. Ages three to 17 are $2.50. Ages 18 plus are $5. Seniors 55 plus are $3. And for non-residents, there is a differential fee. Two and under are still free. Three to 17 is $3.50. Ages 18 plus are $6. And senior 55 plus are $5. We did discuss 100% cost recovery, but that wasn't the question. So that's what it is and that's what it will be.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
What do you mean? We discussed 100% cost recovery, but that wasn't the question. What do you mean?
As a part of the budget discussions we had this summer, or actually this fall, you asked for 100% cost recovery models. We prepared that and shared that with you. And the direction we have is to maintain Rose Lane Pool at the fees we have, and those are the fees that I just shared with you. There is a difference if a different discussion were to take place and different direction were received, but we are staying, remaining consistent with our fees as we established this past spring.
Mr. Skeet, that leads into some statements that have been made. Clearly, certain things have been taken off the chopping block because of council direction, and those are that public safety doesn't get touched in any way, shape, or form. The festivals stay. The fees don't go to 100% cost recovery. There are a couple of others, but I think you've made it clear that's for the first round. But when we get to the cuts that need to be made, the reductions that need to be made later on in 15, fiscal year 15, everything's back on the table. But I wanted to go back to something you said last Tuesday. It was a comment you made, and nobody followed up on it. And I would like for you to follow up on it now so that our residents have an idea of what's coming before them. The statement you made, if I understood correctly, was there will be no service provided by the city of Glendale that will not be fee-based, or all services will be fee-based. I don't remember if you phrased it in the positive or the negative. Could you amplify on that?
Mayor, members of the council, I think when I made that statement, it was in context of if we were to, if we were to consider holding the public safety, the public safety sector of the city's operating budget harmless throughout the cuts, throughout the next phase of $8 million or $10 million cut and the $4 million subsequent cut after that. In order for us to be able to provide any services to the community and hold the public safety group harmless and at the current level of funding, then there will be, all of the discretionary spending will be basically used up in providing support services to the enterprise funds that are in, that we must operate, water, sewer, sanitation, tax collections, the minimum financial services, as well as providing the admin services to the public safety. There will be no more funds available for any discretionary services beyond some minimum service levels like keeping the parks mowed and the right of way cleaned as part of that process. Therefore, any services such as recreation, any services, we would not be able to continue to keep the libraries open with the remaining funds that we would have if we choose not to impact the public safety units with the future reductions.
Okay. So this, that statement relates to either you choose to keep public safety, either the next council chooses to keep public safety whole and charge for everything else or close services, or spread it around and public safety comes into the cuts too?
Mayor, that's correct. Another alternative would be for a dedicated, another dedicated revenue stream that would be applied to public safety or could be applied to public safety, hence making some more general funds available. But that's, again, having to consider a tax increase immediately after we've sunset attacks.
Mayor?
Councilmember Alvarez.
In, what do you cover? Or, you know, all residents pay the property tax. So what is it, the amount that goes to Glendale? What does that money take care of or cover for services?
Mr. Skeet?
Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, the primary property tax that is currently budgeted, I think it's slightly under $4 million. The maximum authorized primary property tax that could be collected, based on the current formulas that is set out by state law, is slightly under $5 million. And those funds could be and would be used and is used for providing general services to the community and is part of the general fund operating budget. The majority of the, the majority of the funds collected from property tax is assessed on the secondary property value, and it is directly and limited to the payment of debt services for capital improvements that the council has approved in the past. And that number is somewhere in the vicinity of $20 million per year.
So those funds, because we're not going to have the services, right? We, the community center, the O'Neill, all of that is going, you're not putting any money into that? Into, you're not getting general funds to pay for those services, right?
Councilmember Alvarez, generally, yes, we are receiving a small portion, a small portion of the general fund operating budget. Like I said, I think it's slightly under $4 million today, is applied to the $130 million of, is part of the $130 million of general fund operating expenses. So as that is spread around, since there's no dedicated stream to track that, that is commingled with. of, is part of the $130 million of general fund operating expenses. So as that is spread around, since there's no dedicated stream to track that, that is commingled with the sales tax and the franchise fees and the state shared revenues, and then used to fund the $131 million of operating expenses.
Mayor, Mr. Skeet, what I'm getting to, or I'm trying to get to, is the police and fire will have no reduction, and the pool's going to be open, but the centers are closed. So really, there's nothing for the kids to do. So I really believe that that's going to increase our crime rate, which affects police and, well, all the employees, but police more than ever. If you don't have anything for the kids to do, they get bored, and that's when they start getting into gangs and so forth. We all know that. So I think we need to understand that our future, our kids need the recreational services, the community centers, the pools with their $2.50 and the other prices that you're going to charge is not, doesn't work anyway, because the people that live in those areas, we're loaded with apartments, there's a lot of people on food stamps and welfare and so forth. And then having no recreation facilities at the schools, and then we're not going to do that either. You know, we really need to think about this, especially if we could put the money that we have in the general fund that's being on hold for a special interest group. I really think that we need to rethink this some more. I think it's going to increase crime. It doesn't do any good to the kids. If a kid should want to be a professional hockey player, he can't afford to go and have any kind of lessons or football and so forth. We've got to teach our kids when they're very young, and we're not doing that. And I think when a person comes in and goes to Glendale and goes to the chamber, they're very interested as what is being offered from the government, the schools, and so forth. So just having the pool open is not going to cut it. And closing the community centers, not considering them, is not going to help. And libraries, you know, a lot of the kids go to the libraries to do their homework because, to this day, not too many people have computers. So we need to think of all of that. And I think we need to do it soon. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else wish to make any comments? Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment that, Mr. Skeet, back when we started our budget discussions, and this is something I think I mentioned last week, under the scenarios, the first three scenarios that were presented, if the team left, there would still be a $6 million deficit that we would have to deal with. Wasn't that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, I think that's correct, yes. And I think a subsequent scenario, if I may, a subsequent scenario showed that there would be zero cuts that would have to be made if we didn't have the team. Now, I think I owe you and the rest of the council and the community an explanation of that, because that is one of the scenarios that was presented at the time. And I wanted to point out to you that that scenario, as it was pointed out and developed in the analysis, did not account for any of the systematic reductions that we should make, knowing that the sales tax was going to be sunsetted in 2018. So with showing that no cuts would have to be made immediately to the system, did not account for the fact that we are potentially going to lose, after five years, $25 to $28 million. The revised scenarios that we have presented to you today, that shows a $12 million cut should be made, between this year and the next two years, in fiscal year 13, 14, and in 15, would allow for us to systematically take out of the operations, the base operations, those $12 million that would allow for us to smooth out the impact of the loss of the revenues from the sunset sales tax in 2018. So I think there was a little bit of misunderstanding with that scenario, as I initially put it together and presented it to you, because it did not reflect the realities beyond the first five years. It was simply an analysis that showed the first five years where the fund balances would be, what the cuts would have to be in order to maintain that fund balance. However, did not reflect the changes that would have to be made to the system once the sunset, the sales tax went away, in the second five years. The analysis tonight shows that information and incorporates that smoothing-out effect.
Thank you.
With all the work you've been doing on this, surely you have an idea where those smoothing-out cuts are going to happen? Can you give us any idea of that, or will you please give us an idea of where those are?
Mayor, members of the council, the attempt in the scenarios that I presented to you tonight is to show that the earlier we make those cuts to the base operations, the longer the effects of the revenues and the benefit of the revenues collected by the sales tax would last. If we were to delay the cuts in the first year, or $4 million or $6 million, we would still have a positive fund balance at the end of five years, as those four sets of scenarios show. However, the drop-off in the fund balance would be dramatic after the year 2018. So in an attempt to do that, in an attempt to smooth that up, that drop and cut in the funding, I'm proposing that we do $6 million in one scenario, or one option, and $4 million this year in the second option, and then $8 million and $10 million in 2015, and $4 million in 2016 in the scenario that keeps the team. That would give us nine years to continue to monitor growth in the community and determine if the growth that is included in these projections are 3.5%, which is a reasonably expected growth over a long period of time. There will be periods when the growth will be much greater than that, but over 10 years or 15 years, it is typically going to average somewhere in the 3.5% to 4%. But it would give us nine to 10 years for us to make adjustments along the way, based on new realities as they present themselves year over year. So it would allow us, an additional four years after the tax, before we would have to make some drastic change again to our operations.
Okay, so I think the answer to my question is, if you're going to cut to $6 million immediately, you're going to do that by eliminating 67 full-time positions, which equates to $3.7 million in salary and benefits. Of those 67, you feel 30 have vacancies today, and does that mean those are 30 that don't need to be filled, because there are certain jobs that you don't have a choice on filling them or not?
Mayor, the 30 vacancies that we have today is not an indication that those 30 vacancies are vacancies that will remain vacant. It's just to give you an idea that currently we are operating with 30 vacancies. However, some of those vacancies may require, to be fair, be required to be filled, because they may be deemed essential in the operations. So it's just that the reference to the 30 vacancies was just to give you an indication of where we are today, not that those 30 would be part of the 67.
Okay, that's what we're getting at. There's going to be 67 people that won't have a job anymore, or there may be less if you can eliminate some vacancies because you deem them not to be essential to this organization. And so those 67 positions that belong to people will equate to $3.7 million in salary and benefits. And then all other operating expenses, I don't know what that is, but you're going to be not doing, we won't be doing some things that we are doing in order to achieve the other $2.3 million. Do you have any idea what those types of things are? What are we not going to do that we're doing now?
Mayor, councilmembers, for example, I think Councilmember Alvarez hinted at the fact that some of the recreation programs will be eliminated, as part of that. The attempt was to keep at least some of the recreation programming in place, and specifically, my desire was to try to keep the biggest recreation activity, the Roseland Pool, open, but some of the other after-school programs and recreational programs would be eliminated. Some of the other savings would be materialized through reorganization, and some services may be privatized along the way, in an effort to maximize the benefit and minimize the cost to the city. Some of the special events that we're keeping may shrink in size. We may be able to continue to provide them, but not in the magnitude that we are. The marketing, the Channel 11, those services would be restructured to continue to be provided, but provided at some reduced levels.
Is this what we're going to talk about next Tuesday, December the 4th?
No. Mayor, next Tuesday, December the 4th, is planned to include a presentation on what kinds of structural fixes that is included in these numbers, the details to those structural fixes that has been identified in the risk management and employee benefit funds that needs to be showed up because of the reductions that was taken through, over the last four years or so, as we reduce the fund balances in those accounts.
Okay, so those accounts have to have funds replaced, and we're going to discuss that next Tuesday.
In detail.
But that's not included in this money?
Yes, they are included in these numbers.
They're included in the...
What I'm going to present to you on the 4th is the details of those numbers that are included in here.
Okay, it really makes no sense, because we're talking about reductions, whereas in the other case, we have to look for money to refill, replenish.
Mayor, if you bear with me a little bit, the operating expenses in the fiscal year 13, at $136 or $135 million, does include the numbers required to make those fixes and adjustments to the fund balance. What I have not presented to you, and will be presenting to you on the 4th of December, is the details behind how those fixes were developed, and how those numbers were developed. But the total numbers are already factored into these scenarios and options.
When will all this take place? Whichever scenario we go forward with, the $6 million or $4 million, when will those have to take place?
Mayor, the process that I have outlined will include consideration within the next 60 days, and a full-blown presentation over the next 60 days to partly this council and the new council as to how the reorganization and restructuring will go forward over the next 60 days.
Mayor?
Councilmember Alvarez?
We're doing this on December 4th, but then we're making a big decision today to contract with Mr. Jamison for the Coyotes, which I have, if we had money, I would gladly suggest that Mr. Jamison has been, to me, the best contract that I, and what he's talked to me about, I think he would be the best to get this lease. But if we don't know, you know, if we don't know the full plan, why are we doing this now? We're getting into a contract that's millions and millions of dollars, but then we don't know what's coming on December 4th, other than the explanation. I would think that we should have done all of this before, and then say to Mr. Jamison, yeah, we can afford this or we can't, but just to go out and, you know, sign a contract or a rental agreement without really knowing what we... We need to know how much we have, and how much is not there, and where did it go. We need, every time we come, we tell different things to the public. It isn't all about the Coyotes. It's about services for the people. When I decided to run, I wanted to see that everything was the same for everyone, for all taxpayers. So I came in knowing that Westgate, I know about helping out, but for us to be helping out by providing the sales tax from Walmart here on Northern or Northern Crossings, you know, to Westgate, that doesn't sound fair to me, because we're not getting anything, Oquatea's not getting anything in return. So I just don't know how we can make a decision, and this is a big decision. I know that you're going to leave office by January, but what are we going to do about it, the ones that remain in the council? I just don't think that this is a good business deal. I think that we need to look at all the accounts, all the money, and find out what's missing, where is it, or what happened. But we never get that. And at this time, any other business would table this and say, let's hear about what you're going to talk about on December 4th. So I couldn't vote, you know, for Coyotes at this time without knowing if we had any money or not. You can't, it's not good business to cut services, get employee, who's going to do the work around the city? If you don't have enough sanitation, and these are the services that really count to the community. They want those services. So I think this is a wrong move, but, you know, I'm only one vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Alvarez, and members of the public who have, there are many people who have been calling for this item to be tabled, either until we have more financial information, or until we have the new council that will get to work with whatever is put in place. And I did offer that option to the council at workshop November 20th, last Tuesday, and the majority of the council said no, that they did not wish to hold this over. So Councilmember Alvarez, to answer your question, the reason it's here tonight is because... because the majority of the council said to bring it forward and vote on it tonight. If you want to try a motion to table, you're welcome to do that. I don't think you're going to get very far, but...
And I know that, you know.
Mayor, I think she attended.
Yeah, she was at that meeting, she was.
I was at that meeting.
Yes, she was. I know you were at the meeting, and I'm just reviewing it.
Mayor, the view of one person, I mean, when you have it all set, it doesn't mean that I didn't understand. I'm just trying to see if you will consider that you're not doing a good business deal, not for us and for Mr. Jamison. And I think he deserves the courtesy of knowing that we do have the money, and we are going to keep our word. And so far, the people that are voting tonight, I know if we, if you, the mayor, that's been here longer, don't know how much, because we were told that there were zero funds in the general fund. That's what I heard. So I was there, and just because I'm not going to side or change my mind, but I wish you would do the right thing, and I don't mean you, Mayor, and do what's best for our community.
And I didn't mean to imply you didn't understand what happened last Tuesday. I was saying that more for the people viewing on TV, the people who keep saying, leave it over for the next group, and I was just reviewing, and I do not have it in my, I do not have any authority to change what the four want, so we'll go forward with this. Does anyone else have any questions? Councilmember Martinez?
Not a question, but just a comment with respect to Northern Crossing. Just to refresh some memories of those in the audience and the viewing public, is that the city bought that property because the owners of the property at Northern Crossing, we're going to make one big swap meet. I think there's 54 acres there, and the city council did not see that as an option for the future especially, because that would just not be right. There's a residential area in there, and to have one big swap meet would not be right. But on top of that, when the arena issue came up, the fact was that in talking, and I forget now, Mr. Elman, part of that deal was that, yes, we will go ahead with Westgate and with the hockey arena, on the condition that the, you know, the council made the decision that Mr. Elman would develop that property at Northern Crossing, which he did, and is now a very viable and thriving center. And also, as part of that, that the sales tax generated from that was going to help to pay for the debt on the arena at Westgate. This is just a reminder, or perhaps some of you folks might not be aware of that. But switching to something else, Mayor, just with respect to the reduction in recreation services, I have a question. Does the county, I know they have some programs, recreation programs, have we ever done anything with them, or do they have them? Is there a way we can tap into some of those programs, if they have them?
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, I'm not sure exactly what kind of specific leverage is the recreation department uses to maximize the benefits to the Glendale community. I know whenever the opportunity presents itself for leverages, we do look at those. We've partnered with the Y and the Boys and Girls Club and other agencies to provide services in areas where we are not providing services, but specifically with the county at this point, I cannot say whether or not we are actually partnering with them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, if I may, I have an answer to the question about the number of part-time employees. The number of regular part-time employees that we currently have on staff is 46. Those part-time employees work at somewhere no greater than 30 hours per week. Now, those do not include the part-time employees that we have in the police department, for example, as we partner with other agencies to manage traffic and public safety, security out at the stadium and the arena. So those are not considered in these numbers. These are the regular part-time employees delivering regular daily services to the citizens of Glendale. The number is 46, and they work at no more than 30 hours per week.
Thank you. Councilmember Alvarez, did you have any follow-up questions to that answer Mr. Skeet provided?
No, I just, how long, I have, yeah, I do have one. How long have, what's the length of time that contract employee can work? It used to be two years, but now I know people that have been working there three and four years. Is there a time that you have to cut them off from a contract, or no?
Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, I am not aware of any specific time limitations on the contract employees. I know they are evaluated annually, and if the services continue to be needed, and that continues to be the most efficient way to provide the services, we do extend it. So I'm not aware of any limitation on the length of time a contract employee can stay with the city.
Thank you. I have no other questions, Mayor.
Several years ago, and it really doesn't bear on this, but maybe somewhat why Councilmember Alvarez is asking the questions, this is many years ago, under a previous city manager, we were told that there was a federal law, or some sort of law, where we could not keep our part-time employees without paying benefits more than a certain amount of time. And I remembered the two years also. I don't know if any of the other longtime councilmembers, and so they had to be either converted to full-time or let go, but that may be what she's thinking of. It doesn't bear on this, but I think it goes to what she's talking about. Are there any questions for any of the councilmembers? Okay, Mr. Jamison, would you or any of your group in the front row care to address the council and the audience?
I will.
I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you now, and through the rest of this meeting, to refrain from clapping, stamping your feet, or making noise in any way. Some people have been here for many years, like Monique there, who's nodding her head, knows that this is not something brought into play just for tonight, but this is the way we operate in this city. And we ask that if you hear something that you want to support, you just simply raise your hand. If you hear something you don't like, then you just go like this. But if you, if there are outbursts or whatever, I will recess the meeting. Thank you. Mr. Jamison?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, I will be short and brief. I realize this is a big decision, and I realize the council has had a lot of information to deal with, a lot of questions. This is a deal that started basically 17 months ago, that was presented to me, and we've worked on it for a long time. Three brief points. Number one, it's hockey. It's National Hockey League. It's a sport. It's a wonderful sport. It has a tendency to unite people, both here in Glendale and throughout the entire valley. It's something that more and more kids will play. More and more kids will get involved. Ice rinks that exist hopefully will continue to grow, and there will be new sheets of ice that have already gone in, and possibly in Glendale and other places, that can happen as well. It's a natural, logical byproduct of having a major league sport in a community, and hopefully things can go from there. The arena is my second point. It's a beautiful arena. It was well done. I admire the city of Glendale, excuse me, a few years ago, for building it, for providing it, for going after a team, for having a place for people to gather, to watch hockey and the concerts. And the good news, there's some very good concerts that are coming up, that are coming to Glendale. It's a very positive thing. It's gone through a tough time. The mall has gone through a tough time. One of the things that the arena does is it provides jobs, a number of jobs during the course of the year. It also provides both full-time and full-time, part-time jobs, and in some cases, somewhere between 800 and 1,000 people that come and work there on a nightly basis to make sure that the operation runs and runs well. It can be an economic driver. I'm fairly certain, excuse me, that not only in this city, but every city, that every restaurant, many of the hotels, know exactly what events are going to be in the arena, when they're going to be there, what time they start, what type of crowd is expected, because it's a big part of their business success. And it's probably one of the reasons why the city of Glendale decided to put this arena here. Now, it's been a difficult go, and it certainly, as I mentioned earlier, had its ups and downs. At the end of the day, I think the goal of this partnership between the Coyotes and the owners of Coyotes, and the city of Glendale, is to help make not only the mall, but also the city, more money, help be an economic driver, work together, and be a good partner. I think the third thing is the city, the city itself. The city has taken a chance. The city has had some big decisions to make. 2008 caused a lot of problems, not only here in this valley, especially in this valley, but throughout the country. And I think we're just now recovering from that in some ways. I know we have terms such as fiscal cliff and other things coming up, but in regards to what's going on here, I think the idea is the city is trying to count its costs, look at the potential revenue, see what's on the horizon, see what has to be taken care of, what has a chance to grow, what has a chance to produce more revenue, and what has a chance to maybe get Glendale through this. I think that's part of the reason, and I said it the last time I was here, and I'll say it again, the major league franchise has a very strong obligation to be a partner with the city where it resides. That's something I take very seriously. That's something I believe in, and that's the reason why when Mr. Skeet called and said, "We need to talk," that we have eliminated $30 million in costs from the first five years of this deal. So hopefully, on the short run, we'll allow the city of Glendale, which, by the way, is a very good, great city, 230,000 citizens who care about their city, who want it to be successful, and we want to be a part of that success. But I say all of that to say this: I respect your decision. I respect whatever it is you have to go through, the due diligence you need to do to get to what you hope and believe is the correct answer. That really, in some ways, obviously impacts us, obviously impacts me, but I also respect and understand that you have a decision to make. You probably know which way I would like that decision to go. I do care about the Coyotes. It was fun last spring, you have to agree. Nobody played the L.A. Kings any tougher than the Phoenix Coyotes. Nobody clap. But I do think, or it is important to me, that you understand that I respect that you have a big decision to make. And whichever way you go, I will respect that. If you go to continue with the Coyotes being here, this major league team will work with its partner, the city, to try to help the city overcome some of the obstacles they need to overcome in the short term, to work together in a positive alliance, which I truly believe is the best way that professional teams should work with their community. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, before you go away, there may be some questions for you. No, I do. I have three questions that have been, that I have been asked to ask you by citizens of Glendale.
Okay.
Okay. The last time you were here, I asked you, who are your investors, and you declined to answer. Will you tell us tonight who your investors are?
No, I will not.
There is a strong feeling around the community, I don't know if you call it a rumor, a belief, or what it is, but there's a very strong feeling that current and/or former Glendale employees will be on your staff or be affiliates, according to the term used in this agreement. Can you verify if that is accurate?
I do not understand the question.
Are you planning on hiring current or former city of Glendale employees to manage this deal once it's completed?
Current or former? I'm not aware of what you're talking about.
Do you understand?
I do understand the question.
Okay.
Now, that could be very broad, and I may not be going broad enough.
Maybe ones that you've been working with closely.
Oh, no.
No what?
No, I'm not.
Okay. And the third thing is, when are you going to close the purchase?
Well, we need to wait for this meeting, and then we're going to work with the NHL to go as quickly as we possibly can. I don't have a definitive date because there's another obstacles to get through. We couldn't really go forward until we knew whether or not that the city council would vote to accept this deal. We will then, as I've said last time, we will then move as quickly as we can to work with the NHL to make sure that they want to know, they'll want to know what the lease is. We would now have a lease. We would then talk with them and create, run a schedule that would close as quickly as possible.
And you can't give us an estimate now?
No, hopefully in 30 to 60 days.
Okay. I actually have messages on my phone.
Yes.
From a year ago, not from you, but from one of our negotiators, saying, "He has the money, he's closing the deal." He has the money, closing the deal, month after month after month. Has the money, he's closing the deal. What can you say to that? Do you have the money?
When it's time, when it's time to present the money and close the deal, we will do so. We've not had the opportunity yet to do that.
Then why was the negotiator for the city of Glendale telling me it was all done, and you had the money, and you were going to close the deal?
Well, was that a year ago?
Oh, it's gone through months.
We didn't have a lease until June the 8th of 2012.
Uh-huh.
And then from 2012 to now, as we moved and said that we were prepared to go forward, then I got a call from Mr. Skeet that said that we needed to renegotiate.
So all of the messages that were before June of 2012 were not accurate?
No, I'm not saying that.
Well, they...
I'm saying that we couldn't go forward until we had a lease.
But when I have messages that say, "He has the money, he's closing the deal," he didn't say based on a lease.
Okay, well, first of all, I didn't send that message.
I know that.
Okay, so secondly, I would have been prepared to answer that in a very fair and honest way.
Okay. Thank you. Does any, do any of your other people who've come with you wish to speak? Okay, let me see what time it is, if I start, want to start public comment now or break now? Which would you like?
Break.
She's a break, before the public comment.
Very short.
Very short break.
Five minutes.
Okay, we're going to recess for about 10 minutes, I guess, and then we'll begin public comment when we come back. Thank you. The Glendale City Council meeting, November the 27th, 2012, is called back to order. We're now going to begin to receive public comment regarding item number five. And I know there are some people who've changed their cards they had filled out for six and decided they wanted five. If you had signed up for six and now want five, just go to the back and fill out a yellow card for five and give it to our city clerk. Give me a moment, since the numbers changed. Give me a moment, since the numbers changed. Okay, we're going to try to get these all in within one hour, which is the amount of time I'm going to allot. If we receive more, then we'll ask that you present your comments in a shorter amount of time. Begin with Mr. Ken Jones.
Norma Alvarez.
Are you there, Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. That's okay.
I thought maybe I wouldn't be first this time.
You want to give up your first position to somebody else?
This is fine.
Okay.
I'm Ken Jones, 6130 West Glendale, pardon me, West Claremont, Glendale, Arizona, 85301, The biggest mistake of your lives will occur here tonight if you approve this item. Things have changed. Tanger Outlet is now our anchor tenant. We don't need the Coyotes for that role anymore. Remember, the sales tax was approved to save people's jobs, not to keep a sports team Mr. Skeet said last week, he does not recommend approving this. His reason was, this lease will require more layoffs, more layoffs. Great, isn't that great? A few minutes ago, Mr. Jamison stood up here and said, "Having the Coyotes would be good for the children in the valley." I heard him say that, in the valley, not just for Glendale. The valley isn't the ones being asked to pay for this. Glendale is being asked to pay for it. The man saying this, he says he would be a good partner, a good financial partner with the city. The man said this, saying this, just happens to want $300 million from us. He's not giving us $300 million, is he? He wants $300 million of our money. This time, why don't you vote with your heart and your conscience? Instead of some wild idea that we're going to be a wonderful sports mecca and that you owe somebody from Chicago and California something, you don't owe them anything, you owe us something. If you can bring yourself to say no, then at least you could put this off. If you can't bring yourself to say no, you could put this off and let the next council handle it. They are the ones that will have to pay for it. Last closing remark about this: If this item is passed, I will talk about a referendum plan that will delay it again at the citizens' comment part of this meeting. Think about it. Don't just act like you've already got your mind made up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
My name is Jennifer Lacy. My address is 6801 West Kings Avenue, and I'm in the Soro district. Mayor and council members, I am a 20-year resident of Glendale. My family lives here. I went to high school here and took classes at Glendale Community College. I own a home here. I've worked for the city at the libraries, and for the past 10 years, I've worked for the Glendale Elementary School District. This is my home, and I'm invested in the success of this city. I am in support of the lease agreement for Jobbing.com Arena. I lived here while I, I lived here even while I obtained my degrees from ASU main campus. The friends that I acquired from the East Valley during that time in my life never came to Glendale. They never had any reason to, because there was nothing here that they didn't already have on their side of town. This is a common attitude amongst many. This summer, I have met many people who do travel to Glendale from all over the valley, and their reason is to support the anchor tenant at Jobbing.com Arena, the Arizona Coyotes. These are people who come here because of the Coyotes. They come spending money, buying merchandise, and eating at restaurants. This expenditure helps the people in the Westgate community keep jobs. Glendale is fortunate to have two sporting events that people bring from all over the valley. The Arizona Cardinals bring people from August until January, and the Coyotes bring them from October until April or longer. With the Coyotes as an anchor tenant, that's extending, that's extending increased attendance and exposure to Westgate from five months of the year to eight to nine months of the year. To remove the anchor tenant, 40 nights of events would need to be found. I have been attending concerts for the past 20 years and have noted the decrease in these events. In our current economy, large-scale concerts are too expensive for many musicians, and the ones who can fill seats are already being evenly, evenly shared by venues such as Jobbing.com, Ashley Furniture Pavilion, and U.S. Airways Center. Most musicians are choosing smaller venues such as CoAmerica Theater. As for non-concert events, I attended the roller derby at Jobbing.com last year. Attendance was very small, and if these are the sole type of events expected to make up for the loss of an anchor tenant, then further losses to our city will be the result. I support the lease agreement because I believe it is in the best interest for my city, not just now, but for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Darren Lacy, and I live at 6801 West Kings in the Soro district. I am treasurer of Glendale First, the group that was opposed to Proposition 457. We provided signs for businesses downtown, flyers to be handed out, and yard signs to be posted across Glendale. Our group, comprised of Glendale residents and patrons, made it our goal to help educate Glendale on the negative effects of Proposition 457. I mention this because I only want and desire what is best for this city. I have lived in Glendale for 18 years and have watched the city grow and emerge as a diverse area that includes shopping, business, sports, and entertainment districts. Tonight, we are discussing and deciding the fate of Glendale and the Westgate area with the newly negotiated arena lease agreement with Greg Jamison. The discussion has unfortunately been distorted to a Coyote-centered issue. The true issue is that Glendale owns an arena and will have to operate the arena regardless of the tenant that occupies that arena. What needs to be decided is what makes best use of the arena and will provide enough foot traffic to help the area fully realize its potential and vision. We have unfortunately have been experiencing what life without an anchor tenant would be like with the NHL lockout. Restaurants and retailers have reported $18,000 to $25,000 losses per game due to the decreased foot traffic. While the lockout is temporary, it does provide a glaring example of the consequences of allowing the team to leave. The agreement with Mr. Jamison provides for 70 guaranteed events under penalty. That number is largely due to the Coyotes being the anchor tenant. It is my belief that in order to fully realize the potential and vision of the Westgate, the Westgate area, it is imperative that Glendale secure the Coyotes as an anchor tenant. Mr. Jamison, Mr. Jamison has a proven track record of running a successful franchise and arena. He is able to accomplish this by building up throughout the community, and this is the very essence of what we have lacked surrounding this team. With this agreement, we not only guarantee an anchor tenant, but gain a community leader in Mr. Jamison. Westgate was designed with the purpose of bringing economic growth and stability to Glendale. It would accomplish this by being both a jobs creator and a revenue stream for the city. It has been a large investment for the city, it's no doubt, but one that has been and has the future potential to become a major economic engine. This agreement serves as a long-term investment to help Glendale flourish and come out ahead in the end, as demonstrated by Mr. Skeet a week ago and again tonight. By the end of this agreement, Glendale comes out ahead by almost a two-to-one margin, about $100 million. That alone proves this agreement is a wise, wise investment for the city and its residents. My request is that the council votes yes on this agreement with Mr. Jamison. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lacy.
Mayor, council members, here I am again. It feels funny to still be coming to stand before you after all this time.
But you still have to say your address for the record.
Oh, I moved. I kept trying to get closer to Joyce District, but now she's not my councilwoman, so I think I'll stay where I'm at. 8550 West McDowell Road, Phoenix, Arizona.
Thank you.
It feels funny to stand here again, not funny in a good way. I still stand in awe of all of you. The things you do every day for your city are amazing. It's been a process. It's been an education. This matter has gone on way too long. It's time to put this to bed. It's time to put this whole issue to rest, one way or another. You had your workshop and the general consensus of what has to be done. Whether or not the little tiny details are worked out, you know the general numbers. You know it's going to cost you. It's unfortunate. There really isn't a whole lot to be said that hasn't already been discussed. Darren had awesome details for you. He had awesome reasons for you to vote in favor of this agreement. Mr. Jamison sits here today, as he has done for the last, what, 15, 17 months, and out of all the people who have come before you to try to purchase or to make this lease agreement, I think that this guy has really stood up here and put everything on the table. When you said, when Mr. Skeet said, "I can't go with this deal, it's too much money," he didn't say, "Well, I don't want to do it." He said, "Let me work with you." He said, "Let me be a partner to you." He came in and he said, "I will take this off the table, I will give you this concession." You're still going to have to pay one way or the other, because that lease has to be, the debt has to be serviced. So nobody ever made a profit from subtraction. And subtracting 40 games a year and then trying to rebuild those 40 with something else doesn't really make sense. You've got this 40-plus, since it's the Coyotes, you're probably going to get more. God knows, they've been trying. But you've got that 40, now build on it. He's willing to do 30 more or pay a penalty. Nobody else has put that on the table before. I don't know what to say to you, Councilwoman Clark. You're one tough cookie. Working with you over this process, working with Mayor Scruggs, my condolences to the city of Glendale, because they're going to lose two of the finest public servants I've ever witnessed, ever. You guys, I mean, I don't even know what to say. Mayor Scruggs had a vision, you had a vision. You have put your backs to the wall, dug in, and kept trudging forward in the face of great opposition, the economy against you, all of this, and yet you still put your hearts and souls and everything else on the line, whether it was your seat on the council, whatever it took, you were honest and true. And when I grow up, I want to be like you guys. Oh, if I'm forced to grow up, I want to be like you guys. All of you are inspiring, your efforts, and if I was wearing my Coyotes cap, I would take it off to you. Please approve this agreement so that we can all move forward with the efforts to keep Glendale and the Coyotes profitable. Thank you.
Thank you, Monique.
My name is Larry Finer. I live at 18205 North 63rd Avenue in the Soro district. I stood before this council nearly four years ago, and I asked you to negotiate the best deal you can without dropping the ball, without losing the Coyotes. I knew the loss of an anchor tenant would be far worse than whatever deal a competent council would be able to negotiate. We have a competent council. I've read all of the deals. Some of the deals were better than others. This one is the best. Even the arena management agreement is by far better than any we've seen before, and this is kind of what I'd like to talk about. For an arena management agreement like the one you're voting on tonight to work, you need to hire a candidate, a management company, that comes with experience in successfully managing a sports and entertainment facility. And experience in riding the ship of a struggling hockey franchise doesn't hurt. There are very few people like these on our planet. There's only one man that I think that can offer you that at this time. His name is Greg, Greg Jamison. He wants the job. No one else has come forward with the same experience that he has. Offering this contract to Mr. Jamison would give the city and franchise everything needed to turn around this team and Westgate. He's done it all before in San Jose. He can do it again here in Glendale if given the chance. Here's a short list of the qualifications and accomplishments Mr. Jamison has, has accomplished. Please correct me if I'm wrong. From 1980 to 87, Mr. Jamison served as the director of marketing for the Dallas Mavericks, where he elevated the team from an expansion-level franchise to a respected frontrunner. They went on to win a championship. In 1987 to 93, Mr. Jamison served as VP of Business Ops for the Pacers. The Pacers are among the top clubs in sponsorships, ticket sales, merchandise, and broadcast production. In 1996 to 2000, Mr. Jamison served as the president and COO of the Silicon Valley Sports and Entertainment Group, the parent company of the NHL San Jose Sharks. Mr. Jamison's oversaw the day-to-day business operations and handled all of the decisions regarding the Sharks, their AHL affiliates, and the HP Pavilion events. The Sharks Ice family of ice rinks came, is home to the number-one-ranked adult hockey league with over 4,500 adult hockey players, amateur hockey players, according to USA Hockey. The Sharks Ice is, at San Jose, is one of only 10 facilities in the U.S. with four or more NHL-sized rinks. It's the largest facility of its time under one roof west of the Mississippi. Jamison's led management teams for all parts of several ice facilities, including the HP Pavilion, the Sharks Ice at San Jose, the Sharks Ice at Fremont, and Oakland Ice Center. Mr. Jamison has served as manager and board member of the San Jose Sports and Entertainment Enterprises Ownership Group. He was also the franchise's governor to the NHL. In 2001, Mr. Jamison successfully assembled a group of local investors to buy the Sharks after being personally approached by then-team owner George Gunn III. Other properties managed during Jamison's tenure as president and CEO, MLS San Jose Earthquakes, including the first championship season, the San Jose Grand Prix, Fight Night at the Tank Boxing Series, Strikeforce Mixed Martial Arts, later sold to UFC. In his 13 years as president and CEO, the Sharks advanced to the playoffs 11 times. During Jamison's tenure at the, as the president of the Sharks, he also led the transformation of the team into one of the NHL's most respected and successful franchises. He is a top-notch guy. He deserves this lease, and Glendale deserves to have Westgate and the Coyotes for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Scruggs and city council members. My name is Gary Lemay. I live at 11212... I live at 11212 North 49th Drive in Glendale. Just a few comments, and quickly. First of all, you know, what we can afford and what we can't afford, and that's where it's all about. First of all, I have absolutely no problem with the Coyotes at all. As a matter of fact, I think they're a fantastic team, and I admire them. I have a cousin that plays hockey. I know a hockey, professional hockey player owns a restaurant in my, in a little town where we have our summer home. I've met Wayne Gresky. And I, so hockey is a fantastic sport. There's no argument there. It's just a fact that we don't have the money. We are broke. We have, we're a billion dollars or more in debt. I'd love to have a Lamborghini, but I got to settle for a Corvette. I just can't, I can't get a Lamborghini. So, that's where we are. It isn't a fact, these folks that are here that support the Coyotes, and I know where they're coming from, but you know, I mean, we've got to face the facts. We just don't have the money. That's all. It's, that's it. Now, I was told, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but I've been told personally that if 457 failed to pass, that everything would be just back to normal. We wouldn't have any layoffs. There wouldn't be any need to cut anyone from the police department. Our fire department would not suffer any losses. It would be just business as normal. And this was printed, not only told to me personally, but it was also printed in the paper, in the Star. Well, and now we're saying, oh, oh, well, that ain't quite right. Now we're going to use that money for the Coyotes. We're not going to, we're not, and so the 67 guys that are going to lose their job in the fire, in the police department, that are citizen, the citizen employees, the civilian, rather, employees are going to take a hike. We're going to lose those guys. 66 Swarrens are going to come off the street to take their place, and it's going to put my family and everybody else in Glendale in jeopardy because our police force is going to be compromised. Same thing with the fire department. Now, you know, if it doesn't come to pass, I'll eat my words, but I guarantee you that if one person is popped out of the fire, the police department as a result of this, then I'm, I just, I just, I'm sorry, but I was not told the truth. And, you know, one other comment I'll make, and we can do with some things, we can do without some things. We can't do without our fire protection. We cannot do with our law enforcement. We cannot. Our police department now is compromised. We're down, officers. We're short people. In forensics, we've got four people that are doing job for 10. Our records department is shambles. We don't have enough people in there now. I volunteer, and I try to run a business, and I volunteer still with the police department. But you see, we're, if we lose more people, we're just, we're fooling ourselves. There are things that we don't need that isn't going to impact us, like losing our law enforcement officers or losing our fire department. Things like, I'm sorry, but Councilwoman Alvarez was concerned about the children not being able to get to the pools, and they probably would go to join gangs. Well, you know, one thing that is not really, I don't think, the responsibility of the city of Glendale is to raise somebody's kids. I'm sorry. I think that's the parents' responsibility, not necessarily the city's responsibility. It's very nice that we have those things available for the kids, but it ultimately comes down to the responsibility of the family to raise a child. And I don't think that, you know, if we have to cut those things, that's what we have to cut. If we have to cut the library, that doesn't necessarily going to put me in harm's way. If we have to cut other areas, it doesn't put me in harm's way. But when we cut law enforcement and we cut fire protection for the sake of the Coyotes, then I just, I cannot accept that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. Rod Williams.
My name is Rod Williams. I live at 7614 North 59th Avenue here in Glendale. I need to ask a couple of questions because it was noisy in the back and we couldn't hear, but the sunset on the tax is it 2017 or 2018? Somebody said 2018, I think Mr. Skeet said. I thought it was in 2017.
Well, go ahead and present your comments and the answer.
Okay. One other question. I want a clarification if I could. If Mr. Jamison does not put on 30 events, he's going to reimburse us 25,000 events, which is $750,000. If he does not have any hockey games, he will reimburse us $2,400,000. Yet we're going to give him an average of $16 million a year, and he can walk out the door with almost $13 million and never do one thing. My comments tonight. Four of you are going to vote on this issue. Two of you will go home, put on your Coyote jerseys, and draw your pension for the rest of your life, and never take a cut in pay on your pension or anything else. Two of you will go back to City Hall and face all the employees that you're voting tonight to lay off. The number that was raised last Tuesday at the workshop, there would be 160 employees would be let go on the first cut. This will affect over 600 people that live in Glendale. 600 in the first cut. The second cut, taking five years from now, will be approximately the same number of people. So now you're affecting 1,200 people, laying off 320 employees, who's going to wonder how they're going to go home and tell their spouses and family how they can make their house payments, pay the utilities, and maybe pay their car insurance to Councilman Knack. Five years from now, we will be faced with cutting police and fire. The city managers said that would be the cut. They will be faced with that. This time, their holy money. You have said over and over how great the employees are that have worked with you for so many years and devoted their time and all their efforts to help you get through this financial crisis. Yet you're going to reward 320 of them with this work that they have done. They will be gone. You're not only doing that, but you're taking the debt of Glendale of $1,200 million to $1,500 million for a city of 225,000 people, every man, woman, and child. I cannot imagine how the four of you can vote to give one individual $320 million to run his business and pay his employees thousands and thousands of dollars, knowing that 1,200 citizens will suffer by the actions tonight. I know Councilman Knack said that she's had pains in her stomach over this issue. I think if this passes tonight, she will have nightmares the rest of her life.
Waldo Pasca. No, no, come on. Mr. Jones and whoever you are, please. Mr. Pasca.
My name is Waldo Pasca. I live at 17210 North 53rd Drive in the Choya District. Mayor and City Council, I come before you tonight to ask you to reject this agreement. Listening to the presentations tonight and last week, the city would be better off without the agreement. Only in the out years, when the city makes large assumptions about the revenue and other economic factors, does this deal allegedly become good for the city. If these projections overstate the revenue and the benefits to the city, Glendale's headed for bankruptcy. Looking at the projections tonight, we're in a bad state with or without this deal, and if we're paying millions of dollars to manage the stadium and these economic projections of how much money we're bringing in don't come true, the city is not going to be able to afford its bills. We can barely, starting in 2018, pay for anything other than police. And so we're making a big assumption that all these projections are going to be true, and then this will be a good deal for the city. But Glendale doesn't have a good history of making economic projections related to stadiums. In 2001, the city projected we'd be making millions of dollars today on Jobbing.com Arena. In 2007, the city projected Camelback Ranch would be a boon for the city. Neither of these projections have come true or even close to becoming true. Both deals have been very bad for the city, the exact opposite of what the projections showed. Now, we're supposed to believe these new projections are correct, and our whole basis for accepting this deal are that these projections are going to be good for the city in 10 or 15 years. So please don't fall for the same trap the third time of accepting overly optimistic projections that inflate the revenue for the city when we just don't know what's going to happen, and based off of past history, we should not believe them, these projections. I ask for you please to reject this agreement and negotiate a new deal, if possible, that's actually good for the city and based on sound economic projections. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pasca.
Mayor, Council, thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Sam Chavira. I live and reside at 6118 North 88th Avenue in the Yucca District. I lived in the Yucca District for 20 years. Many of you might know me, but if you don't, I'd like to briefly introduce myself. I made a career, but let me put my glasses on so it can make it a lot easier. Here we go. There we go. I made a career out of service when I became a Phoenix firefighter 15 years ago. My beautiful wife Judy and I chose Glendale as a neighborhood to raise our family. 12 years ago, we were blessed with our beautiful daughter Serenity, and then after she was born, two years later, we were blessed with our equal beautiful daughter Amnesty. For years, we've enjoyed the high quality of life that makes Glendale special: safe neighborhoods, beautiful parks, and a well-maintained city. Earlier this year, I entered Glendale politics because I saw the fiscal responsibility that was threatening my family's chance of continuing to enjoy the high quality of life that made all of us here tonight choose Glendale as our home. And just really quick, I'd like to raise a hand how many Glendale citizens we have in the room tonight. Thank you. During my campaign, I personally knocked on thousands of doors. My supporters, family, friends, brothers and sisters, Team Awesome, knocked on tens of thousands of doors more. We talked about the right priorities for Glendale: attracting high-waging jobs, promoting education, and protecting public safety. We also did a lot of listening. We learned that there is a genuine concern that deals, that deals made by our city council have threatened the very quality of life that makes Glendale special. Our neighbors are tired of risky deals being made that undoubtedly benefit out-of-state corporations and developers, yet leave Glendale without proper guarantees and puts city services at risk. Over and over, we heard frustration with city parades and celebrations that have been canceled. Our youth are not able to grow up learning about and celebrating what makes Glendale special. We lost, through attrition, nearly 50 police and firefighters. Our streets are less safe, and our neighbors are left waiting for help at times of their greatest need. We can all think of many other ways that our neighbors have suffered as a result of entering into too many risky sports deals. Police understand, please understand, I have never wavered in my support for the Coyotes or Westgate. We all know that they can be one of Glendale's greatest assets. However, our city needs to start making smart deals that put the interests of Glendale first. I urge the city council to consider the long-term impacts of their vote. For the outgoing council, today's vote will likely write the legacy you leave behind to our city after years of dedicated service. For those continuing their term, the deal will continue to impact our city for years. It is my sincere hope that the proper research has been done, budgetary figures are confirmed, and the proper safety nets are in place to protect our neighbors in Glendale. That is the style of due diligence that I look forward to, to bring to these council chambers in just over a month. I look forward to serving alongside you for the benefit of our neighbors. But before we move forward, I just ask that we fiscally, fiscally clean our house, get it in order, find out exactly where we're at with our budget before we make any of these deals. I thank you for your time.
Arthur Thurston.
My name is Arthur Leroy Thurston. I live at 7608 North 46th Drive, Glendale, 85301. That's the Cactus District. My home phone number is 623-435-2800. Did you guys hear something? Did you hear something? What the thunder was that? Man, I can't believe it. Are you serious? Those are the first ones I've seen in a long, long time. Quack, 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 quack. What is it? What is it? Oh, oh, you know, those are ducks. They're flying in the sky from north to south or south to north. I don't know which direction they're going because I've never been good on directions. But you know what? The saddest part of the whole thing is that, seriously, at Thanksgiving, my family and I went out to Australia Park Ranch, not Australia, yeah, anyway, we were out there in fancy lake area, and there was 24 dead ducks in the road. Dead ducks. Dead ducks. Because the cars were going so fast and so quick and quick and quick, they were dead ducks. And they were out there, people out picking them up, picking them up, picking them up. I guess people going so fast they couldn't stop, and they'd run them over. But you know what? You know, there actually were just some lame ducks, too, that hadn't been killed. Truthfully, lame ducks. And the saddest part of the whole thing is, is I cannot hardly get that vision out of my, out of my mind right now. The ducks that were cracking and flying, and then the lame ducks that were crippled and crippling their society and crippling their families and crippling everything because they couldn't maintain anything in the town. And so what I'm going to say is that we have a lovely mayor with a history of successes in his town that's getting ready to retire. We have an honorable vice mayor that's getting ready to retire. We have two lovely, lovely, well, actually, I don't know whether you're cute or not, Martinez, but the thing about it is handsome Martinez and lovely Knack. And then we have a lady that is now a lame duck in our political world. That's an honest statement. It's in the paper, I know. And she got beat in a council race, 60 to 40 percent, because she based her running mostly on this cotton-picking arena and mostly on the casino. And I think that it's improper for these retiring people and the lame duck to make a decision tonight at all in this matter. Because soon, next year, we'll have a full council that can vote on the matter and be totally responsible for everything that's going on. And by the way, I respect Joyce Clark. She's a fine, fantastic person. I just use that as an example. Fantastic effort in the mayor's, in the council, and for years and years and years. I would like to give you all a statue out here of this council for five, 10, 15 years of wonderful, wonderful service. But keep in mind, we've got new blood, new people, and they're coming up. Let's give them a chance. Let's give our children a chance, our few old men a chance, whatever it is, and let's retire with dignity. And I'll be the first, I told Elaine Scruggs before, I'll be the first to kick in the money to give her a bronze head or bust her body, whatever you call it, to put in the Library Park. And you know what? If you guys can walk away with dignity on this matter, I would do the same thing. We'll include all of you. And that's my speech for the night relative to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thurston. Jessica Engel.
Can you hear me? Okay, I'm Jessica Engel, 3341
Maybe move it down just a little.
West Potter Drive, The Phoenix, Arizona. So I've been watching this process for a few years now. I've never spoken, never really done any public speaking in my life, so wrote down a few thoughts so I wouldn't misstate anything in my nervousness, so please bear with me. Just like any other large commercial entity, you need an anchor tenant. Let's think about a shopping center where the major department store moves out. What happens? Everything starts to go down because you need an anchor tenant that brings the foot traffic in. The anchor tenant is the Coyotes. The Coyotes bring in about 600,000 people a year. You don't want to lose that 600,000 people, as quoted by Glendale Mayor Ms. Scruggs. Is the arena management fee necessary? If you look at it, it does sound like a lot of money. We are looking at everything in the long term. We're looking over 30 years. We have studies that show we are going to recoup that money. It isn't just gone. So the question is, why do we have to give it? Because that's how the market works. Senator McCain said it best. It may not be the perfect system, but it's what works, again quoted by Ms. Scruggs. Shaking, obviously. Okay. Somebody has to manage that arena. It's better if the entity that owns the anchor tenant manages it than someone else who might put in conflicting activities. Remember when the Arizona Cardinals football game was scheduled the day before the Fiesta Bowl? Didn't that make people happy? Ooh, my legs are really shaking there. No, it did not. It's better to have your anchor tenant taking care of the management before, because face it, they are the stability of the arena, again quoted by Mayor Scruggs. Basically, these are my words now. Glendale's in a rut right now, but the rut can be salvaged. This is not the time to be focused only on the here and now. You have to think about the long term. I ask that you think about the full picture, or I ask that you think of the full picture when deciding who is going to run your facility the best. Who has the proven track record? Greg Jamison does. This isn't just me saying this. This is his proven past. Thank you.
Rhonda Pearson.
My name is Rhonda Pearson. I live at 31715 North 15th Drive, Phoenix, Arizona. I would just like to ask you all a few questions. How would you invest your personal money? What if this was your life savings, your grandchildren's college education fund, your retirement fund? What would you do with it? Would you trust your money with an investor who has no proven financial success just because he happens to be the lowest bidder? Would you risk your own hard-earned money on the chance that maybe, just maybe, if you cross your fingers real, real tight, he'll make the right decisions with your money? Or would you look at the bigger picture and use an investor who has a passion for what he does? Someone who has experience? Someone with a successful financial track record to manage your money and give you the greatest return for your investment? As a team owner, Mr. Jamison is just that investor. He has been financially successful in non-traditional hockey markets in the past. The city of Glendale has already made its investments. That investment is Jobbing.com Arena and the NHL hockey team, the Phoenix Coyotes. Now it's time to let the experienced, passionate, financially successful investor take control of that investment and turn Glendale into the thriving city that we all know it can become. The Phoenix Coyotes is bigger than just a hockey team. It's a sense of community. It's a sense of family. Before all this ordeal happened, I didn't know one single person in this room. After going through this and bonding with over 30 people that are sitting behind me, I have some of the best friends in the world, one of which was just up here speaking with you. I believe in this deal. I believe you guys believe in this deal. In your heart of hearts, you have to know this is the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do. What will you do if this doesn't go through? What's your plan? There is no plan. This is it. This is the moment. Take it and make this city amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Darrell Larson. Pardon? Pass. And the card says you do not wish to speak on six either. Is that correct? Joe Fraser.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Excuse me. My name is Joe Fraser, and I live at 202 East Huntington Drive in Tempe, Arizona. And I come to you tonight not as a Coyote fan, even though I am one. I come to you tonight as a small business owner. I own and manage a furniture store. It's located next to IKEA. We chose that location very carefully for the foot traffic that it would bring to us. And I have three families that count on this store for their livelihood. If it fails, they got to find other employment. These are real people, and I provide real jobs. If a situation arose in Tempe that caused IKEA to consider leaving, and my council and city manager could help but choose not to do so, I would question why. And if the answer that they provided was they wanted to protect a net 70 city worker jobs at the cost of 150 full-time and 550 part-time employees and put to risk another 700 jobs, I would do everything in my power to fight that decision. Well, that is exactly what we're talking about here tonight. The numbers I made up are not, the numbers I gave are not made up. The scenario is real. The arena employs 150 full-time employees. It provides 550 part-time jobs. Westgate Shops, they employ roughly 500 people, and the surrounding hotels an additional 200. These are real businesses with owners who, like myself, have put their own money at risk, who have labored to make a successful business and to provide the opportunity for many people to receive their livelihoods. They chose Westgate because there's a professional hockey team playing at the arena. They've come to rely upon the team and all the supporting activities that take place Now, all that they've come to rely upon is at stake here. A decision will be made to make an agreement with Greg Jamison or not. Mr. Jamison would keep the Coyotes here. He would bring 41 guaranteed nights of hockey and 30 additional nights of concerts or other activities that would bring more than 7,000 people to the arena. The acting city manager has stated on the record that Glendale would be better off to the tune of $90 million on the low end and a possible $129 million on the high end if the Coyotes stay. Let me repeat that so it's loud and clear. Glendale would be better off to the tune of $90 million or more. I ask you as a business owner, a hockey fan, and a father that knows how hard it is to support a family today for you to do the right things, right thing by the 700 workers at the arena and reach a deal with Mr. Jamison. Please don't justify that the net 70 jobs are more important because they're city jobs. They're not. You have the fate of over 700 jobs and the well-being of the businesses that provide those jobs in your hands tonight. Please do the right thing and pass this deal with Mr. Jamison. Thank you.
My name is Bill Dembski. I live 5410 West Beck Lane, Glendale, Arizona, 85306. When I first, I came here a half hour early. I wanted to get a front row seat. So lo and behold, there's reserved signs on the seats, so I got put in the back like the little people. So I thought, well, maybe Joe Arpaio was coming, or St. Joseph, or the bishop, whatever. So I'm sitting in the back there, and lo and behold, the freeloaders come in. You know, how many of these people live in Glendale? I paid taxes for over 30 years in Glendale. I helped pay for those seats, and I get pushed to the back. It's like back in the 60s with the racism, you know? Little people get in the back and us, whatever. So anyway, this whole deal, it's so insane what's going on. You know, my analogy is, when I came to Arizona 30-something years ago, I went to you people and I said, "Well, give me a $180 million house and then pay me $320 million to live in it." What's the difference? You know, what's going on here? That's how insane this whole thing is. But this thing where taxpayer dollars, $50 million, how in God's name could $50 million be given to the National Hockey League? My in-laws live right next door. Old man is 91 and grandma is 88, whatever. Fixed income, social security, that's it. So lo and behold, our property taxes go up, our sales tax goes up, taxes on our telephone, electric, water, anything, taxes for these guys. What right do they have taken from people on fixed income, on social security? That's all they have, and they got to come here freeloaded for, where is this money going to come from? You know, we're $1.3 billion right now on the books, but you add the interest for all these Taj Mahals, the Camelback Ranch was actually in Phoenix, and the Jobbing.com, and the parking garage, and the Civic Center, whatever. You add all that up, we're over $2 billion in debt. And you're going to give these guys $320 million more after giving them $50 million already? Who's paying for it? My in-laws are on fixed income, on social security, barely getting by the way it is now, and you want to say, "Yeah, we're going to take more from you than gives these guys." Freeloaders, that's, you know, what's the difference? Mitt Romney, the 47 percenters, the ones that are feeding off government, the freeloaders, the whatever. What do you call these guys? 47 percenters right here.
Okay, okay, okay. Don't get personal here and keep on talking about the deal, but I understand.
I'm saying the fact. What's the difference between some guy living in poverty that the only taxes he pays is when he buys gas or food or whatever? He doesn't make enough money to pay federal income taxes, so Romney calls him a 47 percenter. These guys are making more than, it was just in the paper, the top 1% in the last several years, the top 1% garnered 90% of the income that was generated in the United States. So the rich, they get richer and richer, and this is a prime example, as if they don't have enough, they want to go to my in-laws and say, "Hey, you know, we want," whatever. My daughter's a schoolteacher. The school she goes to, 70% of those kids are in this federal nutrition program, 70% of those kids because their parents don't, they live in poverty. So with all the problems we have, 27,000 children in foster homes, 43% of children in Arizona living in poverty, and we want to give these guys 3, with all the other problems we have, children, education, fixed income people, whatever, and we want to give these guys $324 million like they really need it? The 47 percenters? You know, whatever. If, you know, like you guys, you guys are leaving. You're going to tuck the tail in and run at the beginning of the year. The worst thing you could possibly do is make the major decision like this and then live happily ever after, giving us Glendale residents $2 billion deficit, and you give these guys $324 million on top of it? Total insanity. But, you know, I know it's a done deal, it's over with and everything, but like I said, with all the people hurting in this state, in this city, February of '09, I'll never forget, February of '09, one month, over 3,000 home foreclosures in the city of Glendale. That in '09, and it's still, I had three houses on my block, short sale foreclosure, one guy walked away. There's so many people hurting, and you want to say, "Yeah, screw you little people, we're going to give these freeloaders $324 million." It's so insane, it's unbelievable. But like I said, you know, the deal is done, you're going to give them, you're going to get out of office in four more weeks, and you're going to say, "Bye-bye, Glendale residents, over $2 billion in debt." And I contributed to it, like Beasley, city manager.
Enough, enough. Mr. Dembski, the clock ran out. Thank you.
That's kind of the way it is right now, isn't it? Troy Baker.
Mayor, council, Coyote fans, slay me your ears, please. I didn't prepare anything, I'm just going to speak from the heart. You've seen a lot of theatrics today. I'm not going to try to give you any theatrics. I reside at 15374 West Eugene Terrace in Surprise, Arizona. I am not a Glendale resident. The definition of Glendale resident means you reside in the city of Glendale, I imagine. I will tell you this: every Sunday, me, my daughter, my fiance, we attend Cardinals games. And the numbers are greatly exaggerated. There's more than 41 games per season. You have preseason, you have playoffs. We go to about 60 games, 65 events at Jobbing.com Arena alone. Now, while you're in Glendale, you have an opportunity to meet you fine folks and your entertainment districts and your businesses. I would have never known about Saddle Ranch, or AMC Theaters, or the little place that drives those cars around that my kid loves. We would never have seen those things. But now, every, twice a week, we drive all the way past three theaters to go to the AMC. And not just because we're trying to support the Coyotes and the city of Glendale, just because their popcorn and their sodas are better, because their seating is better, because they have IMAX. What I'm trying to tell you is if you look at my Chase Bank statement, not only do I got the payments to the Coyote season tickets, I hope they can start taking a little more money from me pretty soon, get the season going, but we do the AMC Theaters. We drive over and do the Polar Ice. We've known that there's an In-N-Out Burger at 83rd Avenue and Bell Road. We bought our furniture from Ashley's Furniture, nice $4,500 that I didn't really want to spend, but she's the boss. And unfortunately, she couldn't be here. She's at home with our newborn right now, so I got like three, four more Coyote fans that are home that aren't here. Okay? What I'm trying to tell you is, there's a ton of reasons to say yes, and you might get a few animated, antiquated people up here to give you their version of why to say no, but they're focusing on the sole basis of just money. And I've sold cars for 10 years, not anymore, I'm a poker player. But when I sold cars, I told my salespeople, "Stop focusing on the money, take care of the people, and the money will take care of itself." I believe you guys are doing a good thing, and there's a good direction you guys are going in. And I'm a native of Arizona. I've been here for 40 years, okay? Been a Suns fan since '76, when we should have won it all. I can go over all my accolades of being a sports fan. But when the Coyotes came here and that obstructed view arena that didn't really, wasn't conducive for hockey, I was up there. I was the one saying, "Let's go Coyotes, Red Wings suck." I was that guy. I've stuck with them the whole time. And when you guys built the new arena, you guys took a chance. You guys took a really good chance, you gambled a little bit. Well, you didn't know there was going to be this bubble burst and a horrible economic, you know, future, whatever, but we're recovering from that. And every game that I go to, we meet a couple from Canada that bought one of those foreclosures that have Coyotes gear now. And they go to the games and they talk about like, "Yeah, we don't have a team in Saskatoon or whatever, we got the minor guys," and they play on the black ice. They talk how passionate they are about hockey. They get other people passionate about hockey. Okay? This isn't just a community thing. This is, this is a way of life for some people, and every person that I meet that is involved with the Coyotes are very passionate. Mr. Mike Neely on Buck Night came up and made sure our section had a keg, okay? Everybody that I've talked to, they care. They, they have the 50/50 raffle. I go there and give them 20, 40 bucks every time. Half of that money goes to Coyotes charities and the charity of choice. Me and my fiance also co-chaired the Relay for Life, so we're really involved in charity, okay? So we see the countless number of things that the Coyotes bring to the community. And if you focus just on one bottom line, on one piece of paper, yeah, it might look like it's a coin toss for you guys right now, but I implore you to look at the bigger picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that completes all the speaker cards, and y'all did that 14 cards in 58 minutes. Did a great job. So now we'll go back to discussion of the arena management lease agreement, and do any of the council members wish to make, ask any questions about that or? or make any statements? I'm not calling for the ordinance to be read yet.
Do you want us to make statements beforehand?
No, not that you're going to declare how you're going to vote. I'm just wondering if you have, you know, do you have any question? Okay. Let me ask a couple of questions then. I guess this would go to both, either or or both, Mr. Skeet and Mr. Tyndall. And hopefully you agree on the answer. Okay. I've talked to both of you about the fact that the agreements mention both a team owner and an arena manager. And even though they're going to be the same person or same entity, and you've explained this way, it's always been, they're always this way. But they are two different entities for purpose of what we're going forward with. Is that correct?
Mayor, yes, mayor, that is correct.
Okay. Then the question I have, a question I have is if the entity that is the successful, the one that we enter into an agreement with chooses to be one or the other, I don't want to be an arena manager anymore, I just want to be a team owner. Can that happen?
Well, mayor, the arena states that if the arena managing entity decides not to manage arena or doesn't manage... Circumstances come about where it no longer is managing the arena, then the city has the ability to hire another manager. But it doesn't relieve the team of its obligations under the agreement. The team doesn't have the option not to fulfill its obligations under the agreement so long as the city doesn't default.
I guess I really am more interested in what happens if the team owner decides they do not want to continue to be the arena manager? And who gets to pick that new arena manager? And is there any involvement on the part of the city in this new arena manager coming on board?
Mayor, members of the council. I think the way that the agreement is written now, if the current arena manager chooses to engage another entity to manage, sublet and manage the arena on his behalf, that process would require a review and approval by the city council.
So the entity could not decide, they just don't want to be the arena manager anymore? But they could enter in an agreement with somebody else to take over their responsibilities?
The responsibility is per this agreement. And while the city does have some final approval, that approval is limited to as long as the new entity is willing to honor the obligations and agreements in this contract.
Could the arena manager enter into some contractual arrangement with this new entity without coming through the city for approval by the council?
Craig, my guess is no, based on the...
But we, no, I don't want to guess, I want to know.
The way the document is written today, it must be approved by the city council.
Well, the mayor, the, there is a section of the agreement that allows the arena manager to delegate responsibilities to an arena sub-manager. The arena manager still maintains its same obligations, but it can use another entity to fulfill those obligations. So it could...
Without any feeling, without any position taken by the city as to whether they want that, that other person to take over or not?
That's true, but the arena manager would still have the same obligation. So, and they could contract out all or part of their obligations under the agreement to another entity. But they would still have, with respect to the city, the same obligations to the city. So we would, for example, if they subcontracted out a portion of whatever their responsibilities are, that they choose to subcontract and that subcontractor wasn't fulfilling those responsibilities, the city would have the right to take action against the arena manager.
Original. I have a question regarding several places in which there's reference to a waiver of conditions. And I will just pick out one for here. And this is Section 17.2.3. Conditions to the obligations of the city reference a waiver of such conditions. Who would, well, I got, I'm sorry, I got in the middle of my notes. That's the problem with these notes I sent to in effect. But when it talks about waiving conditions in this agreement, who has the right on the, for the city to waive conditions?
Well, mayor, these are conditions precedent to the effectiveness of the agreement. So for, in order for these to be waived, these would be, this would be a substantial waiver of a material part of the agreement. So council would be required to take action to waive those conditions.
Okay, here's one that is a complete sentence. Closing and closing date, page 7, quote, "means the consummation of the transaction and the date of consummation contemplated by this agreement upon the satisfaction or waiver of all conditions set forth in Section 17.2." So my question is, could such a waiver be an administrative act?
No, it would require council action.
No one else has any questions?
No, you're doing good.
Thank you. Okay. If this is approved tonight, when do you sign it, Mr. Skeet? When do you have to sign this agreement?
Mayor, members of the council, signing of the agreement can take place anytime after the, anytime after the fluctuation of the vote. And between now and when Mr. Jamison officially owns the team, the agreement does not take effect until after he owns the team. So sign in, sign in the agreement, you know, anytime after tonight's vote. We're not immediately, we're not put the agreement in motion. That would only happen when he is able to sign the agreement, which can only happen after he has negotiated and owns the team from the, by the team from the NHL.
Would there be any reason why you would sign before he completes his purchase of the team since it can't go into effect? What would there be, what would the reason be to sign it?
At this point, mayor, I, there's no sense, there will be no sense of urgency to sign the agreement until, until he is, Mr. Jamison is completed. Or is, I get word from the NHL that he is in process of completing and closing a transaction on the purchase of a team.
Mayor, if I...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
If I could, as Mr. Jamison indicated, part of his efforts to raise the necessary financing is contingent upon a lease agreement. And the provision that we wrote in there that allows for the city to sign the agreement with a condition precedent, that it not be effective until the team is purchased, does facilitate that effort on Mr. Jamison's part. So that is the purpose of that provision being in there.
I'm going to propose an approach for the council to consider. Mr. Jamison said that he was brought into this deal 17 months ago. And I imagine that must be the case because we've been hearing about for 17 months. But this prolonged delay of actually having the team purchased and things going forward has been very detrimental to the city of Glendale in many ways. And it looks like it could go on indefinitely. Now, we have another dynamic at work, and that is some people who say, "You're going to leave us with this thing to manage and we should have a say in this." Meaning the newly elected council members and mayor, who will actually be a majority of the council at that time. So I'm going to propose for your consideration that rather than leave this open-ended, as we did in June when this was approved, that there be an end date on this, that the team must, the purchase of the team must be finalized by January the 15th, 2013. Because on January the 16th, new people are seated, including you too. Well, you don't get a new seating, but you stay. But the new people come on board who have to manage this. Councilmember Alvarez, actually, she made a reference in our workshop a week ago. And she said, "You know, it's like we're renting a house, only the renter tells us how much rent they're going to pay, when they're going to pay it, and sets all the other conditions of being a renter. And we, the landlord, just say, 'Okay, whatever you say.'" So I'm going to propose that when the ordinance is read, that a motion include a date of January 15th by which the purchase must be consummated so that the agreement can be signed and entered into, so that this city can move on with its fiscal life. The longer this stays in abeyance, the more difficult it is for us. So I put this out for your consideration. Mayor? Yes, councilmember Clark.
I, I think that this has come out of nowhere. And I would like to hear Mr. Jamison's thoughts on the idea of a date certain, as indicated by you, to be January 15th.
Does anyone else have any comments before I call on Mr. Jamison?
No, mayor, I don't.
No.
Mr. Jamison. Councilmember Alvarez, are you still on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot to check earlier.
Mayor, if...
We have an answer here.
Well, if I, if I, I don't know if it's an answer, but...
Would you like to take a few moments to think about this or something?
No. No, I, what I want to point out before Mr. Jamison, is that the agreement does have a date in it. It has a date of January 31st, 2013 is, is the end date for the closing. And that's, that's found in the agreement.
Okay, then I did miss that, I apologize. Where would I find that?
It's...
17.2.3.
17.2...
Because the one I found was June 30th, 2013, for him to get the 11 million.
It's page 63, it's 17.2.3 subsection F. The closing date shall occur on or before January 31st, 2013, unless extended by the city.
Okay, now, you say this is on page 63?
63 of the clean version, the non-redline versions.
65 in the redline.
65 in what's in our book?
63.
Okay, on page 66, I find F, the closing date shall... So what happens then, unless extended by the city? So at that point, if it has not occurred, then it comes back to the city council, which would be the new city council to make a decision, is that correct?
Probably before that, but yes, mayor.
Okay.
That's the way I understand it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But it says, I have to point out, I'll look at Vice Mayor Freitz. Unfortunately, my papers were on my seat when I got here, so I haven't had a chance to read. Mine says 2012. What did yours say?
2013.
The closing date shall have occurred on or before January 31st, 2013.
The outside closing date unless extended by the city.
But that would be by the city council action, not an administrative act?
Right. Mayor, it would require a city council action.
I mean, in the past, everything was done administratively. And that's why I ask these questions. Things were done administratively, we were not told. So how would we know this would be a city council action?
Well, mayor, this is a substantive alteration of this agreement. So it would require council action.
Well, it'll be recorded then in the minutes, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes.
Every major and substantive change to this deal that has occurred between now and June 12th, or June 12th of last year, of last summer, has been brought to this council. So I don't know what administrative actions you're referring to when it has, Mr. Skeet has done a masterful job of presenting every smidgen, and Mr. Tyndall, every smidgen of change that has occurred in these, in these deals has come before council.
I agree with you totally on this. Why, I was referring to other actions, notably having to do with the arena and the Coyotes previously, and other situations. So I'm not referring to this. And I would like to compliment Mr. Skeet because the changes in terms of the negotiations, the money aspect of this, the fact that there is some accountability are all due to you and I give you credit for, for your work. Thank you. Okay. Nobody else has a comment? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and ask that the ordinance be read by number and title.
Ordinance Number 2826, new series. An ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Miracova County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the execution and delivery of the leasehold interest within the arena lease and management agreement with Arizona Hockey Arena Partners LLC and Arizona Hockey Partners LLC, and declaring an emergency.
Mayor?
Councilmember Clark. I move that Ordinance 2826, new series, be passed and adopted by this council.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the recommended action. Anyone wish to comment?
Yes, mayor.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you. I'm not going to say a lot. A lot's already been said tonight. And I think this council has talked this issue to death for the past 17 months. And you know pretty well where, where we stand on the issue. So simply, I would say that on December 27th, 2003, we celebrated the grand opening of our arena. Now, eight years and 11 months later to the day, we are hopefully celebrating an event as important to our arena as the grand opening itself. Tonight, we have the opportunity to approve a lease management agreement with Hockey Partners that will guarantee stability for the arena for the next 20 years. Now, tonight I brought with me, I didn't even know I still had it till I started cleaning out my office. This is from the Phoenix Business Journal. It's a supplement that was printed back in 2003, in December of 2003, to celebrate the opening of the arena nearly nine years ago. And it said, and I'm not going to read, obviously, everything that's in here, but I just pulled out three statements because I thought they were interesting. It said, "Westgate, in an article entitled 'Flurry of Development Activity in Glendale Serving as a Catalyst for West Valley Growth,' stated, 'In addition to creating new employment opportunities for residents, the state-of-the-art facility will also bring restaurants, retailers, and other employers to the area. It has done part of that job. It is now time to give the arena the opportunity to complete that mission.'" The article goes on to state, "Our western region is critical to attracting quality jobs. As a result, we've devoted more land to business zoning than in any other part of our city." And lastly, it said, "As the valley grows, Glendale's western area becomes more centrally located. When the metro area is built out, the valley's population center point will be near the Glendale Arena site at the Loop 101 and Glendale Avenue." How many decades that will take, I don't know. But the Westgate area is destined to become the center of the Metro Valley area. In the early 2000s, the Glendale City Council created a vision for West Glendale and for Westgate. And its focal point was designed to be Westgate. With an affirmative vote on this agreement, we hold true to that vision. We hold true to the promise that we made nearly nine years ago. We made a promise to the residents of Glendale to fully economically develop the western region of our city. If we do not approve this agreement tonight, we take one step toward the, our fiscal cliff and toward the failure of Westgate. Thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, mayor. I had two pages of notes here that I was going to refer to, but it's been a long reading. And a lot of this information of, you know, since we've been talking about this, as Councilwoman Clark said, for so long, you know, has been heard... you know, has been heard many times over. But just a few comments. You know, at the workshop last Tuesday, we received, we reviewed the revisions to the agreement, and at great length, and we heard the pros and cons from council as to what, you know, should we or should we not go forward with it? And the, then afterwards, we had the executive session, and it was discussed even further, and direction, and I think it was in the open workshop, direction was given to proceed. But the fact of the matter is that I believe that, based on the most recent revisions that have been negotiated, that this makes my decision a lot easier. Because at last Tuesday, executive session, council director staff to continue the negotiations even after that long session that we had. And one of the things that happened, and Mr. Skeet covered that, is that the lease payments will be pro-rated and do not take effect until the, actually, the deal is closed and the, Mr. Jamison has purchased the team. So that is, I think, very, very telling, you know, and in my view, makes the whole agreement much, much better. I have supported the keeping the Coyotes in Glendale for the longest time, I think everybody just knows that. I think it’s the best decision for the city, for the long term. And I want to thank Mr. Jamison because he showed his willingness to renegotiate some of the terms of the original agreement from June the 8th. And so I will be supporting to move forward with the agreement. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Councilmember Alvarez.
I, I’ve made my decision, and I did it a long time ago. And I can’t go up there and sit there and bench and how wonderful, and I feel it in my heart that this is the best when we don’t have the money. We can’t afford it. And what I said at the November 20th meeting, that everything was dictated, you know, as to how we were going to do, keep them, and the landlord was, had no knowledge of what’s going on. And I, and I can really, I want you to understand that if we knew everything, and we were positive that this was going to go through, I would support it. But because we don’t have the money, and now we don’t know, apparently, we weren’t told. I wasn’t here yet. But I don’t know, or I wasn’t told, is not a good excuse. We are 1.3, I think they said, billion, that we don’t know how we got there. We have six, what was it, 600 million that, and Mr. Skeet, correct me, because I don’t have my notes on the money. But we lost some money, transfers were done from different, from things that were not legal to do. We have a situation that, right now, is pending, which is spending the money of the risk management fund. We spent money from the water. We’ve spent money that, when I asked, “Is this legal?” I was told, “Yes, it is.” And then, when I opened the paper where they were missing the money from the risk management fund, our attorney advised us that it was not legal, or that’s what he told the newspaper. I then asked Mr. Skeet, “How much profit have we gotten since you started with this arena?” And he told the council and myself, “Zero.” That’s not a good history. And you’re still going to continue. And there’s nothing we can do because the people that are doing the voting right now are going to be leaving. And if it wasn’t for the mayor exposing some of what’s going on, we wouldn’t have known about it. So obviously, we’re not good business people. We will take input from anyone. We will only listen to what we want to hear. And I’m not going to apologize to anyone in the council that tells me, that, you know, that gets upset because I think that we’re wrong. I know we’re wrong. I know we’ve done stuff. It wouldn’t be in the paper. It wouldn’t be investigated. It’s gone now to the county attorney. It’s serious when you don’t know where the money went. It’s serious when they don’t, whatever, whoever was the manager. And Mr. Skeet is taking a lot of blame for something that he, he didn’t do. But he was part of the team. So I don’t care how good it feels in your heart, or how good you think this is going to go. It didn’t go before. And no one did anything about it. Now, are waters going to go up, or has gone up? Are we going to pay sales, an increase in sales tax? We have cut on services that should have never been cut. And I know there’s a gentleman in the audience that said, “It is not the government’s job to take care of recreation for the kids.” But it is our job to look for a better way of making Glendale a safe community. It’s, if you have a bunch of kids, regardless if the parents, you know, we have to blame the parents, but it’s not the kids’ fault. And I feel that whatever we invest should be to our future and not for business. And so let us not sit there and go by what I feel in my heart or what the information that we got before. Since the day that I came to council, I have dug for information, I have asked for information, and to this day, not all of it has been shared. So let us take responsibility. The community is talking about making people responsible. And they obviously did when an incumbent that, and I have nothing against, a good council member is unseated. And this would have happened to all that would have run because we have not done a good job. And we continue. So please do not come with that excuse. I feel it in my heart, and I, and they gave us all the information. If all the information was given to us, then why are we in the position that we are now? We don’t have any money for anything. For streets, for nothing. So let us be responsible. That’s what we need to do. Your legacy is what you take with you. I don’t think we have a good legacy. And I, like I said, I will not vote for this because I, I see, in talking to the other departments, I see what’s happening. And when the city manager tells me, and when I saw it on paper of how much money we owe, I can’t believe that we got into this. Never has Glendale been in this position. And for the council not to ask questions, and if they did, they were not answered, then shame on us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Canack?
Thank you, Mayor. This decision tonight has been a very tough one. And I know a lot of you out there have wondered how I was going to vote. Because I really took seriously the information that we got about our finances in this city. And it did make me ill to hear some of the things that have happened. And we will be dealing with that. I appreciate everybody’s input. A lot of you have been very eloquent tonight. And I was going to say a lot of what you have said, so I will not repeat. I do appreciate all, you know, the emails that I’ve gotten, good and bad, because they’ve helped me make a decision on what I know and not on what, the pleas or threats that I’ve received. I don’t believe this is really a sports issue. I believe it’s an anchor tenant issue. The anchor tenant happens to be a sports team. This means bringing over half million people to Westgate every year. Another anchor tenant might bring a couple visits a year for one person to come, but the Coyotes bring people there 40 times a year, same people. And the loss of the Coyotes has, as has been said, is probably about 2.5 million right now in revenues. Westgate is only about 50% occupied, and I think there are people waiting in the wings to see what this decision is going to be, to whether we will get to, maybe, hopefully someday, a stabilization of like 95%. The loss of jobs at the arena. Yes, I’m very concerned about the loss of jobs in the city of Glendale. But I’m also concerned about the loss of jobs at Westgate. They’re equally as important. The economy has really been the main reason that we’re in this difficult situation, financial situation in Glendale. We all look back and wish we’d done things differently, but we have to move forward. I see the economy improving every day, and having a thriving Westgate area will be part of that recovery. It’s taken over four years to get to this point. We’ve reams of paper that we have looked at and tried to understand, because sometimes it is difficult. We’ve had other agreements that weren’t so good. I believe this agreement with Mr. Jamison is the best one we’ll get. We have to pay the debt and the O&amp;M regardless on that arena. It’s ours, we own it. I know that Mr. Jamison will do everything he can to have a successful outcome, because it’s in his best interest to do so. As a businessman, he’s not going to invest all this time and money if he doesn’t think he will succeed. The bottom line is, I don’t think the alternative of the team leaving is the answer to our financial problems. We have to move forward with increasing our tax base in the Westgate area, and therefore, I will vote in favor of this agreement. Thank you, Mayor.
I’m fine, I’ve pretty much heard everything.
Okay. I’d like to make a clarification to Rod Williams’ statements that he made the cuts to public safety start in 2015, not 2018. And the tax ends after 2017. Mr. Lemay, I think, summed it up best. He said, “This is what we can afford, and what we can’t afford is what this is all about. And we just don’t have the money.” Proposition 457, so many people voted it down, and they voted it down because they voted for their services and for the city that they knew and loved. Way back in February, we were told by our then-city manager that this sales tax increase had nothing to do with the Coyotes. But yet, when the city staff went all over making their explanations of the cuts that would happen, it was stated very clearly, it was stated by Mr. Skeet in workshops, that if that sales tax didn’t stay, then we couldn’t do the Coyotes deal. So that sales tax is totally tied to being able to pay money to somebody to bring in these 600,000 people a year. On November 5th, we were told our general fund balance was negative. I don’t know about you, but in my house, if I have a, first of all, I don’t have a checking account that’s going to be negative, but, you know, if you have less than zero in your checking account, you go out and sign up a long-term contract? That’s what this is about, signing a 20-year contract when we have less than zero in our general fund. I believe the public will find that they were misled when they voted against Proposition 457, and they’re going to find that because they’re going to lose their services. So I will continue to not support this, and the reasons are that I choose to support small businesses in downtown Glendale who do not have a New York-based real estate firm, like Westgate has, that can lower their rents, make concessions, and do whatever they need in order to keep those businesses in business. The most recent article from the Phoenix Business Journal says Westgate is 70% leased, and it says that there are several new tenants coming. It doesn’t say depending on the Coyote stain, it just says there’s several new tenants coming, and they’re looking forward to the 5 million people that will be visiting Tanger Outlets. So I think it’s up to iStar to keep those businesses profitable. You know, our folks downtown here, nobody gave them money. They invested their own money to start their businesses. They don’t have some big, humongously rich organization that says, “Okay, you’re not doing well, I’ll fix the rent,” or “You don’t have to pay rent for a long time,” or whatever, just to keep you in business. And why do I focus on downtown? I focus on downtown because, quite honestly, our festivals and our special events that have been developed for economic development for downtown Glendale will be back on the chopping block. They were on the chopping block before, they will be again. I was asking Mr. Skeet, “Tell me what those operating expenses are that you’re going to cut that aren’t personnel,” and he kind of danced all over the place. But he said, “There’s not many places to go. There’s not much that can be taken.” Well, folks, when you go outside, enjoy those lights, because it’s probably going to be the last year you’re going to see them. How does that tie to downtown? That’s what we do. You know, there’s a whole lot being said, “It’s our responsibility to save Westgate.” I don’t think so, because they’ve got big, rich iStar to save them. But these businesses out here don’t. And we, that’s our attempt to help them. And I think that that’s all going to be gone, and I think that’s going to destroy the heart of our city. Finally, and most importantly, I choose to support people in different uniforms than Coyotes’ uniforms. I choose to support people that are in our police department uniforms, and our fire department uniforms, and our road crew, streets crew uniforms, and our public works uniforms, and our custodians’ uniforms. I choose to support people in those uniforms over people in Coyotes’ uniforms. And I believe that’s what our residents wanted when they supported keeping the tax increase. I have to tell you, I have... I have to tell you, I have been saddened and a bit shocked by this reference to it being more important, or just as important, to save jobs in Westgate as it is to save our employees' jobs. We each took an oath of office. That oath of office had nothing to do with saving jobs at a private development, none whatsoever. My oath of office directs that I protect services to our citizens, and those services are provided by our employees. And to hear that you feel they're expendable is shocking and very saddening. Finally, I know a lot of you heard the discussion at the last workshop, and I know you've been all talking to each other about it, back and forth, about those mysterious documents that the mayor said she got but nobody else got, that were released on April 21st, 2012, and they have since been released in response to a public records request, and they were sent to all the council members again, even though they had them the first time. But in those documents was one sheet of paper, and the title of it, now remember, these were all created in 2009, around, around the time Mr. Moyes put the team into bankruptcy, as a matter of fact, maybe a little before, a little after. But this one document was titled, "2009 Coyotes Financial Assistance Plan." Can't say it much more plain than that. Coyotes Financial Assistance Plan. In 2012, this is still a Coyotes Financial Assistance Plan. I choose to support a City of Glendale Financial Assistance Plan instead. Thank you. If there are no other statements, I'll call for the vote. Okay, Councilmember Alvarez, your vote on this ordinance is?
Nay.
Councilmember Clark?
A resounding aye.
Vice Mayor Frey?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Knack?
Aye.
Chair votes no. And the emergency clause does not go into effect. Correct?
Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, so the ordinance has passed, there is no emergency clause, because it did not meet the requirements set out in our charter for the number of votes. We'll go to item number six now. Mr. Skeet?
Mayor members of the council, item number six is a resolution.
Could you speak up louder?
Those of you who are leaving, please do not speak and leave as quietly as possible, as we are still conducting business. Thank you.
Mayor members of the council, resolu, item number six is a resolution for the, for lease, arena lease management agreement and a non-comp, non-competition and non-relocation agreement with Arizona Hockey Arena Partners Limited and Arizona Hockey Partners. This item basically follows the, follows the extensive discussion we have, and it's the completion of the, of the two-part process to, to complete the, the transaction of extending the arena management agreement to, to the Arizona Hockey.
Does anybody have any questions regarding this item before I open up for public comment?
No.
Okay. This time, we have 14 speaker cards, so we'll go an hour, and we'll see what happens.
I already spoke on the last matter. I just want to say thank you for your guys' time, and I appreciate it.
Okay. Is Jordan Dixon here? Oh, I'm sorry, Jordan. I didn't see you.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Dixon, and I live at 20389 North 52nd Avenue in Glendale, Arizona, 85308 in the Choya District. In fact, I live a block away from Manny Martinez Park. I'm a 22-year-old native of Glendale, Arizona, a student currently enrolled at Glendale Community College, and I'm a fellow taxpayer. There's nothing more that I love than watching and playing hockey. And for the past three seasons, I myself have been a ticket holder. There was even one point I contributed over half my income just to come to games. And I want to be heard tonight, just to make some things clear, that we're not just Coyotes' fans, we're a Coyotes' family. And that the Coyotes mentioned that we play hockey the hard way, and yet for these fans here, it's been hockey the hardest way. And I want to watch my Coyotes, and I'm ready to do whatever it takes to keep them here. I'm willing to make Westgate my all-things destination, especially now that we have the Tanger Outlets. And I realize that this vote affects more than just Arizona's hockey fans, and it affects our entire hockey community, and from the rinks to Behind the Mask, our local hockey store, it affects all of us. And I'd just like to thank Mr. Jameson and our organization for coming out tonight, and it definitely means the world to me. I go to every hockey game at our arena, and I pray that I'll be able to share the same moments with my kids that the Coyotes have provided for my parents and I. I've lived in Glendale for 22 years now, and I've never once used the recreation center, and I've been to the library once. And yet, I was called a leech and a freeloader tonight. I'm no freeloader, I'm a tax-paying resident and a true fan begging to hear that goal horn just one more time. I'm in favor of saving the jobs of hundreds of Westgate's businesses and employees, because when I was 20, I was one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is JoJo Fraser here?
Caleb Reedy, 10175 South 185th Avenue, way out in Goodyear. I happen to live in the area that that fine gentleman was referring to where they have the dead ducks. Probably a good thing, we've got way too many of them. I chose not to change my card, I just wanted to wait and make sure, see how things panned out. Obviously, we didn't know down to the wire how it was going to be. I want to thank you for voting yes and moving forward with this. We're going to do our best to make sure that we help you see it through. I think that everybody needs to be given a little bit of praise here. Mr. Frey, you have brought the proverbial smackdown when it comes to facts when it's been needed. I can't say on public record some of the things that have been said about you in kindness, I promise, but thank you. Councilmember Martinez? Same thing. You're a man that speaks softly but carries a very, very large stick. Councilmember Knack? Man, you had us worried a little bit there, but thank you for coming through, and I'm sorry for anything that you may have been put through that was negative. Mayor Scruggs? I really think that you deserve some credit for this also. I'm not sure what facts you may or may not have seen that changed your mind along the way, but your support on previous deals that got us here, got us to this deal that has been a resounding best deal for the city. Thank you for that. I'm terribly, I can't even, I'm shaking with joy right now, thinking about how awesome this is. I mean, this team is my baby. That sounds weird, but let's go with it. Joyce Clark? Not in her chair right now. I had some praise for her, but I guess...
He's walking up the aisle.
Oh, she's over there? Okay. I think everybody kind of covered it. I mean, even former councilmembers that are outgoing or still here thanking her for her hard work that she did. I've got to say, I appreciate it, watching council meetings for the last several, what, years now? And her wonderful ensembles for people to comment on was wonderful, including her amazing brooches. Sorry, I'm trying to add a little levity to the situation.
You're doing a good job of it.
With that, I guess all I have to say is, thank you. I look forward to, I go to school here, I work here, I look forward to spending money here still. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I thought I just saw Jim.
Yes, he was here.
Yeah, he was right there. I thought I just saw him. Okay, Bill Dembski?
He may have found him.
I thought I just saw him a second ago.
My name is Bill Dembski, 5410 West Beck Lane, Glendale, Arizona, 85306. All I can say is you lame ducks really screwed up. Now, where are you going to get $324 million? Where are you going to get $324 million to pay these freeloaders?
Uh, come on.
Okay, well, okay, whatever. What I suggest, if somebody has a real big hat, pass the hat right now while we got these Coyote fans here, you know? Because I think that's the only way you're going to get $324 million. So anybody with a big hat, let's pass it around.
All right, come on. Thank you.
My name is Arthur Leroy Thurston. I reside at 7608. I forgot where I live now.
He brought the band out for you here.
7608 North 46th Drive, Glendale, 85301. My phone number is 623-435-2800. What is that? I think I heard a noise. Another, more noises, more noises. Oh, quack, 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 quack. Oh, don't poop on me, please. Don't poop on me, please. I would like to take this opportunity to make congratulatory remarks to our guests. I'm not talking out of place with them to you, to them. And you have my history, is when I get beat, or I get down, hey, I work with you the very best I can in all respects. You people have been labored long and hard, and I admire you for every minute and hour of it. And I have not been to a Coyotes' game ever in Glendale. I used to, as I said, I used to be an investor in the one downtown, but I'm looking forward to the first Coyote game in the city of Glendale. And I want to wish them the very, very, very best possible that they can, you know, work out expecting it to make the city good and big. Council Knack? Council Martinez? Council Frey? Council Clark? You've probably had the hardest job of all, Council Clark, and the most admirable, admirable to stand up to the troubles and toils, and I certainly admire you for that. And Elaine Scruggs? I hope that, when do you actually, I never could find out, when do you actually change offices now? Because every time I hear it's a different person. Oh, you can't say? Would you announce it maybe later tonight? And anyway, thank you. Thank you.
Bye. Okay. Jennifer Lacy? Okay. Monique, are you still here? Monique, who goes by one name? Monique?
No, she is.
You done? Okay. Larry Finer, are you still here? Done? Okay. Very good. So now, Ms. Hannah, would you read the resolution by number and title, please?
Resolution number 4629, new series. A resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the execution and delivery of the following two agreements. One, arena lease and management agreement with Arizona Hockey Arena Partners LLC and Arizona Hockey Partners LLC. And two, non-competition and non-relocation agreement with Arizona Hockey Partners LLC and Arizona Hockey Arena Partners LLC.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor Frey?
Mayor, I move that we pass and adopt Resolution number 4629, new series.
Second. Motion, second, to approve the recommended action as their discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please vote aye. Those opposed? No? No. Okay. Got the votes, motion carries. Item number seven, please, Mr. Skeet.
Mayor members of the council, item number seven is an equity share, equitable sharing agreement with the Arizona Department of Gaming. Interim Chief Black will present this item.
Mayor and council members, this is a request for city council to authorize the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Arizona Department of Gaming for equitable sharing of racketeering influenced corrupt organizations, assets otherwise known as RICO. Participation in this agreement allows the police department to receive a portion of the RICO assets seized on criminal cases worked in conjunction with the Arizona Department of Gaming. Joint investigations tackle illegal gambling, such as internet-based gambling and illegal poker rooms that may be operating in Glendale. This agreement allows the police department to collect 40% of the assets seized from a recent joint investigation. It is staff's recommendation to waive beyond, waive reading beyond the title and adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Arizona Department of Gaming for equitable sharing of RICO assets, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Black? Okay, thank you. Ms. Hannah, would you please read the resolution by number and title?
Resolution number 4630, new series. A resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an equitable sharing agreement from seizure and forfeiture with the Arizona Department of Gaming on behalf of the Glendale Police Department.
Mayor?
Councilmember Martinez?
Mayor, move to adopt Resolution number 4630, new series.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the recommended action as their discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please vote aye. Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Skeet, would you introduce item number eight, please?
Mayor members of the council, item number eight is license management agreement and operating agreement with the Arizona Golf Ventures LLC for the Glen Lakes Municipal Golf Course. Mr. Eric Strunk, executive director of Parks and Raccoon Library, will present the item.
Thank you, Mr. Skeet. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request to authorize the acting city manager to enter into a two-year contract with Arizona Golf Ventures LLC for the management and operation of, of the Glen Lakes Municipal Golf Course. As you may know, it's located at the corner of 55th and Northern Avenues. On September 26, 2008, the council did approve a ten-year agreement with Glen Lakes Golf Management LLC to operate and maintain the golf course. Unfortunately, through a series of, of actions taken by the lessee, it was necessary to find that company in breach of contract, and therefore, on October 24th, the city did retake and seize the assets of Glen Lakes Golf Course. Based on the material breach, we have been working very quietly, very diligently with another golf course management company, Arizona Golf Ventures LLC. Under the terms of the new management agreement, we're recommending a two-year management agreement with that firm. Under the terms of that, we're basically not going to incur any costs at the golf course. It will continue to generate revenue for the city. We're asking that they pay us $1,000 a month, beginning after the sixth month of operation, in addition to $60,000 per year in in-kind services. Also, too, of note, the two-year contract is the same length of time it will take to work through a separate request that the council discussed in workshop in October, which is the potential repurposing of the golf course. That will take time, and this agreement is reflective and considerate of that. And that's something that this council and the new council will also hear a little bit more about as we, we move down the road. It's our recommendation that you authorize the acting city manager to enter into a two-year license agreement with Arizona Golf Ventures LLC. concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Council members, you have questions regarding this item? And all, all ongoing operating expenses are going to be assumed by Arizona Golf Ventures, is that correct?
Mayor, that is correct.
So there's no expense on our side?
That is correct.
I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Frey.
Mr. Strunk, I just want to say thank you. I wasn't sure if we were going to be able to have an operator to operate that yet in such a timely matter, so two-year contract, no cost to the city, and we still will get money, keep the open space. money, keep the open space in that area, try to keep it green and attractive for the neighborhood. So thank you for, I don't know how it happened, but good job.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mayor. Yes, yes. Councilmember Connect.
Thank you. I'm really happy about this agreement, as you well know, and I know that the citizens that live around there are also very happy. I know they really want to keep it a golf course, and it looks like we may be on the way to that happening, even though you are looking at other options. If we can keep that golf course self-sustaining and in good condition, then maybe we won't have to. So thank you for all your efforts, Mr. Strunk. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hannah, would you please read the resolution by number and title?
Resolution number 4631, new series. A resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to execute a license management and operations agreement with Arizona Golf Ventures LLC for the management and operation of the Glen Lakes Golf Course located at 5450 West Northern Avenue in Glendale, Arizona.
Mayor. Councilmember Connect.
I move that we pass on it off, resolution number 4631, new series.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the recommended action as their discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. The one item of new business, Mr. Skeet, are you going to, yeah, it says you're going to introduce this.
Mayor members of the council, the item of new business this evening, tonight, is for you to consider the appointment of a replacement member of the council to fill the vacancy created by the retirement of former council member Phil Lieberman to the Cactus District. I would, at this point, turn it over to the council. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Do you want to have any, yes, Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, this, as we know, came up last Tuesday at the workshop, at the, we discussed it, and I think at that, well, I know that at that time I did not support it for various reasons. You know, I said that I didn't think it would make that much difference at this time because there's really major issues coming up, and all the members could come in, the newly-elected members could come in and, at the same time. But after thinking about it, since then, I have changed my mind, and so I don't have a problem with going ahead and, I don't know at what date, but whatever the council or size that Mr. Ian Hugh take the oath of office and fill the, to complete the term vacated by Councilmember Lieberman.
I'd like to move, then, that we appoint Mr. Ian Hugh, who's the council member-elect, for the Cactus District to fill the unexpired term of Phil Lieberman, and that Mr. Hugh work with, I guess, Mr. Skeet, to arrange an induction swearing-in at a time and place of his choosing, and we don't need to set the time, we don't need to set the place, and it doesn't need to be at a council meeting, and so that's my motion.
I second that.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion?
Well, Mr. Hugh was here. I don't know if he's still here.
He's still there in the back.
Standing in the corner.
He's in the dark.
He's sitting right there where he's been through the entire meeting.
Oh, now I see.
Mm-hmm. So is there a second?
There is a second.
Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, and welcome to the happy group. Vice Mayor Freight, you have a request for future workshop and executive session.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we hold a regular scheduled city council workshop on Tuesday, December 4, 2012, at 1:30 PM in room B3 of the city council chambers, to be followed by an executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03.
Second.
Motion, second, that we meet on December 4th. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can we get to citizen comments? I have 14 requests for the public to speak, and I think maybe a couple people have left, but otherwise, we're just going to go ahead and start our clock here for an hour and see how far we get through these 14 requests. I think Mr. Ken Jones has left. He's the first one.
He's gone.
Okay, so he's left. Bill Dembski, do you want to speak? Thank you.
This is the latest listing of the 10 most, correction, the most dangerous occupations in the United States, brought by the U.S. Labor Department. Number one is fishermen, number two is logger, number three is farmer, number four is construction worker, number five is sanitation worker, number six is airline pilot, number seven is roofer, number eight is coal miner, number nine is merchant mariner, number 10 is miller, number 11 power line installer, number 12 is police officer, and number 13 is firefighter. Administration, you know, how many times I heard, read in the paper, were, you're blaming the administration, you didn't know this, you didn't, like the last $6 million bouncing around, it's legal, it's not legal, whatever. But I have a list of the 16 highest-paid fire and police administrations and their retirement benefits. 16 firemen were paid $2,087,009. 16 guys were paid $2 million and $405,268 in retirement benefits. 16 police administrators were paid $1,988,706 and $404,569 in pension benefits, for a total for 32 police and fire administrators of $4,879,252. $5 million for 32 police administrators. Yet, they would let 20 different cops, 20 different cops, they were paid $1,3461 in overtime. 20 cops got over $1 million in overtime. One cop was paid $63,322 in overtime. What were the administrators? 63 thou, this is twice as much as many people just earn on a regular job, whatever. This one fire captain was paid $150,523 in salary and $29,463 in pension benefits. This one fire captain got $179,986. 90%, this is I read in the paper, not too long, 90% of all Americans have no employer-paid pension or retirement accounts. So all these police and fire administrators, they really got a fantastic deal going. Like, good examples, Ed Beasley just retired in June, $193,000 a year for the rest of his life, which comes out to be over, over $16,000 a month pension for giving Glendale a $2 billion deficit. Administration costs are, I don't know if you're aware of what the administration costs are in this city, but the fire chief is paid $166,805, and the assistant police chief is paid $146,436. Total compensation for, it's just beyond belief for these administrators. And I don't know anybody that would have $29,463 dropped in their retirement or pension account every year. $30,000 bingo in their pension. How Beasley got his $193,000 a year pension, $16,000 a month pension from the city of Glendale. There are over 75 police and fire administrators that are paid over $100,000 a year. Over 75. $100,000, $100,000 a year plus their benefits. Good example, my brother-in-law, prime example, with the higher taxes, our screwing Americans, especially the people that can at least afford it. When Glendale raised our property taxes and sales tax and water bills, people couldn't at least afford it, were forced deeper in debt. My brother-in-law, whose only income is social security, was forced to get a factory job at 74 years of age, so he can pay his higher property taxes, higher sales tax, taxes on his electric, water, telephone, et cetera, et cetera. Is it fair that taxpayers paying taxes all their lives, 74 years of age, here, my brother-in-law is forced to pay more taxes so these fire and police administrators can get their $179, $180,000 a year plus their pensions, whatever? Like Beasley, keep bringing up Beasley, $16,000 a month pension taxpayers' expense. My suggestion is, you know, everything was surprised with the administrators, oh, I didn't know this, I didn't know that, whatever. I would strongly suggest you have an audit of what kind of administrators you have. Beasley was a prime example. How can this guy let the city of Glendale go down the tubes, $2 billion in debt, and then he gets rewarded with $16,000 a month for the rest of his life? But I would strongly suggest, administration, you know, it's for what they're getting paid and what they're doing, and then we wonder why we're $2 billion in debt.
Thank you. David Dai, are you here? Gary Lemay, are you still here? Ermgard has left, I think, Ermgard, oh, you're here, you went, okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, council members, I'm so excited to be here this evening. I decided last minute, I heard it on the news that this was going on this evening.
You gotta state your name and address.
I couldn't resist. I'm Ermgard Holm. I live at 4763 West Palmeir, 85301. I'm in the Cactus District, and I've been there 38 years in the same home. It's a townhouse at Mediterranean Gardens. We are 94 units, and I'm just the happiest person there. I got this lovely home with sunken tub, with atriums, with, just gorgeous, but I think we were dropped by the neighborhood, you know, we had the Larry Miller Toyota, which was my income. I worked for them for 20 years for Larry Miller, and it was like across the street, you know? Ermgard, you have a customer on my day off, you know, I run over, sold the car, and there was no, there is no more building there. Mazda, Larry Miller Mazda, I worked there, they had a wire fence there with a barbed wire on top. I called Joe Arpaio, he's a buddy of mine. I asked him what he has in there, because I know only jails and funny people have these. And I want to thank you, it was taken down. I don't know if Joe had anything to do with it, but that big old barbed wire is down. Just when you come down Glendale and you turn into 47th Avenue, it was there on the right-hand side, terrible looking. I have people coming from Europe constantly. They come in to see the, used to be Roadrunners, down, and we, they played in, what, the fairgrounds. We went to see Tom Jones there. Elvis Presley was there, so hopefully, hopefully, we can get, you know, names here to our arena now. But I hate for them to look on the right, don't look, don't look at the barbed wire. What they did now, they took 14 palm trees out of our front residence, which is just two streets. There's Palmeir, there's Mediterranean Drive, and then there is Via Cynthia, just three streets, and we are 94 units in this little cubbyhole. They took them down because Salt River couldn't trim those palms. In Palm Springs, the palms have, the leaves, they never trim them, and I wish we could have just left them and just grow. But there are wires there, and it is dangerous. We are living in an under-wire community, so why not take those wires and put them underground? Well, it was too expensive. When you look up that street, you see that there are only five poles, these brown old poles, they're going to tip over. Two months ago, one tipped over, right, where Sunland Lincoln Mercury used to be? There was this pole, it tipped, the whole neighborhood was out of electric. But what I'm trying to say, they put the five, they left the electricals here, and they should be on the other side of the street, and you can see, they're starting out here, and then they brought them over, run them in front of Mediterranean Gardens and run them back. And this is really, it's so sad, because we were promised a city building there on the corner, 47th and Glendale, where Toyota used to sit, that beautiful cake building I saw through my kitchen window. And there is this body shop now, this is, it was, it was permitted from residential to, to commercial back in '94, and they promised to keep the doors closed, only three could be open. They have all the doors closed. It's just like the biggest body shop in town, I think. Bangin', Saturday, Sunday nights, cutting and all this noise. You go out on your patio, there are all these, these lights looking at me. I have to hang sheets up. So I think we got dropped over there. And then there's a brown house on the corner on 48th Avenue, which is full of graffiti, full of boards. We are paying at least $1,000 a year each unit, 94 units on taxes. Please, if we get our new for the, for the Cactus District, maybe he can look at this whole thing. We got stomped, it in an hour, they cut those 14 trees. It's so sad looking, so sad.
Okay.
But I'm so excited for our Coyotes.
Okay, Ermgard. Mr. Skeet, have somebody from, I don't know, council officer, whatever, call some of this, maybe Salt River Project, and you have Salt River Project Electricity, right?
Yes.
Get the community representative, and I don't know what other things, most of it seems like it's not city
Yeah.
...business, but she can, we can connect with the people who can help her, and you should introduce yourself to your new council member, right there in the last row, Ermgard.
I was, I was on our HOA for too many years, five some years as a president, and everybody calls me still for, you know, things for our community. Thank you so much for letting me talk.
You're welcome. Thank you for everything you do. Bud.
Bud Zomach.
Mayor, council members, thank you for letting me talk just for a second. It's very late, so I won't talk long. Last week, council member, I'm sorry, Bud Zomach, 7302 North 58th Drive, Glendale, Arizona, 85301. Two weeks ago at the last council session, council member Alvarez asked that we entered, or that the council entertained the idea of letting public comment go early or first before the council meeting started, and then, because people had to stay late, and I'm here to not support that idea. I've stayed today and listened to all of this, and many times I had questions that I thought I wanted to propose to the council, only to have those questions answered during the council session and didn't need to ask that question. And so to do that ahead of time is kind of putting the cart before the horse. I would rather sit and listen to. The second piece is, this is my city and this is my government, and if I can't sit and go through two hours or three hours of a government issue before I ask my questions, I need to think about a different process or live in a different city. So I'm not in support of moving that public session before the council session, and continue to keep it as it is after the council sessions. Over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zomach. Thank you for all your work in our city. Arthur Leroy Thurston. You pass, okay. Salvador Ressa, and I'm going to apologize ahead of time if I don't pronounce names correctly. You correct me.
My name is Salvador Resaero, 2 North and Street, Phoenix, Arizona. I thought Phoenix was bad, but you guys stop it, as far as the length of time that you guys go on, but I'm not here to talk about that. There are such things called the United Declaration of Human Rights, which the United States was a signatory in 1948. In 1948, Eleanor Roosevelt pushed for it after the atrocities of World War II and World War I. And today, sadly enough, not only in the city of Glendale, but the city of Phoenix, the city of Mesa, the city of Scousdale, and the state of Arizona, the human rights are being violated every day. are being violated every day. And I don't know if you saw it or not, but three weeks ago, there was a program, Primer Impacto, Univision. If you haven't seen it, we have some discs that we can, we can give it to you. That show of Primer Impacto was doing a test, and they were not even doing a test to Glendale, they were going to do it to Phoenix and other places. But as soon as the car that was doing the test about racial profiling moved out of the apartments where they picked up the car, in less than five minutes, they were profiled by a member of the Glendale Police Department. I'm not saying all the police are doing that. There's very good policemen in all those, all those cities, very good policemen. But there's a few that are keep on doing it, and we have identified some in Phoenix, we have identified some in Tempe, some in Scalsdale, and then what happened here? Now, I have a copy of the Declaration of Human Rights, which the United States is signatory to, I can leave it here. You guys, you know, I have several copies, you guys can see it. But the bottom line of the whole thing is this, you guys are struggling economically. I'm sure you're going to get a lot of the teams that are coming, soccer teams, national, the Mexican soccer team is coming, other teams are coming, to enjoy your facilities. Primer Impacto actually went worldwide, because it's seen all over the world. And right now, the city of Glendale is no different than any bad city in Arizona. You guys, right now, are tied with the same thing that Sheriff Joe is doing. Now, again, I'm not saying all your police are doing that, but what we do urge you is to consider what Eugene Oregon did, and they declared themselves a human rights city. By declaring themselves a human rights city, they are abiding by the Declaration, the United Nations Declaration of Human Rights, which the United States was the promoter and the first signatory of it. So, that's all I'm going to say for now. I think there's other people are going to speak in another interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fabiola Lara.
Mi nombre es Fabiola Lara. Vivo en el...
Do you give your address, please?
Sí, vivo en el 6604 Norte 59 Avenida, en Glendale, Arizona. Yo vivo aquí en la ciudad de Glendale, y este, ah, pues a mí no me ha parado la policía. Necesito un intérprete, si me puede entrar un intérprete?
Want to know if there's an interpreter?
Mm-hmm.
There is none.
He can interpret.
Yo vivo aquí en la ciudad de Glendale.
I live in Glendale.
A mí no me ha parado la policía.
I was not stopped by the police.
Pero sí tenemos evidencias de que la policía está haciendo perfil racial.
But we do have evidences of racial profiling by the police.
Tenemos videos que tomó el, el, este, el programa de Primer Impacto.
From the Primer Impacto program.
Donde un policía paró a un señor nada más por su aspecto que tiene, por perfil racial.
Where it is shown how the police stopped a person apparently for his physical appearance.
Yo como residente de aquí de Glendale.
As a resident of Glendale.
A mí me preocupa que esta, que esta ciudad sea igual que la ciudad de Phoenix.
It bothers me, it concerns me that this would be, this, Glendale would be the same as it is in Phoenix.
Nosotros ya le perdimos la confianza a la policía de Phoenix.
In Phoenix, we have lost confidence with the police.
Y no le queremos perder la confianza también a los de Glendale.
But we don't want to lose confidence with the police in Glendale.
Me preocupa cómo se mire la imagen de esta ciudad.
I am concerned what the image of Glendale, how it's presented.
Si se vuelven a ver, hacer perfiles raciales con la policía.
As is the racial profiling done by the police in this video.
Es todo, gracias.
Gracias.
Sir, I'm going to pass this card back. The, a woman keeps saying she lives in Glendale, but she has written 802 North 7th Street, Phoenix, Arizona, so.
Es que el...
So, if she could fill out a correct card, could you pass that down? Everybody has 802 North 7th Street. Does anybody live there? Do you live there?
No.
Okay. Okay, Raoul Cordero. Victor Hugo Preciado. Victor Hugo. Jorge Frias. Josefina Navarres.
I wasn't going to speak, because I don't have a very good voice tonight, but I sat here all night listening to everybody else speaking, and it made me want to get up and speak. Most of the people were congenial and very good, but the one gentleman who insulted those people was not very good, and he wasn't, it wasn't fair, because they are not freeloaders. They pay a price to come to the city of Glendale to attend a hockey game, and I don't consider that freeloaded. I feel they're paying their way. Even if they don't pay taxes here, they're still paying their way, they're helping us. And I thought he was very rude, and standing up here and telling what people earn, what's pensions to get, that's none of our business. I mean, I think he's, he's, he needs a lesson in how to behave, and I'm for the coyotes.
Thank you, Bonnie. Okay, that's the end of the citizen comments, council comments and suggestions. Councilmember Alvarez, do you have comments or suggestions?
I have none.
Councilmember Clark.
I have none. It's been a very long wait.
Vice Mayor Frey?
Well, I have something that I share with everyone. One of my colleagues, Councilmember Martinez, you had a special day yesterday. Councilmember Manny Martinez and his wife, Mary, celebrated their 60th wedding anniversary yesterday. Is that not correct?
Yes.
Not only did he spend his 60th wedding anniversary, he came to work yesterday for the canvas of vote, and didn't, he could have easily called on the phone and voted, but Manny, I commend you. You're definitely a role model. You know, I thought I was doing pretty good with 43 years, but 60 years, so I thought that was something that should be acknowledged. Congratulations.
And congratulations to Mary.
Congratulations to Mary, yeah. And I always end by saying, please watch children around water.
Councilmember Martinez.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor. I do want to say, and a lot of folks that have left that spoke, I want to thank everyone that showed up this evening, the ones that, you know, were pro and against, because we heard some good arguments for both sides. So, I, you know, I thank them for taking the time to come and hear their views. It's very important that people do show up and tell us what they think, so I really, really appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Canac.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you all for your attendance, and the meeting is adjourned.